Six thirty P M. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order from Wednesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Um, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'll start out with Commissioner Chioni.
Here.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Present.
Commissioner Bridge.
Present.
And Commissioner Braxton.
Present.
All right, great, so um, we're gonna uh, move right into the oral communication. Uh, again, this is the um, opportunity for whoever's here or on the phone to talk about any item who's not, that's not on the agenda tonight, and I'm going to remind again, the phone number that um, the public can call into is eight oh five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. Uh, so is anyone wishing to speak on oral communication? Please state your name for the record.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident in Lompoc. So I am here today just to give you some background information. I served on the Planning Commission some time back. A lot of times pertinent material information is lost. So what I have today is a copy of kind of what's happened to our general plan and what's happened um, within the community. But it's the background information that I really want you to have. So these are documents of, of that reference how we got to where we're at with some activist groups. They call themselves power brokers in ag and power brokers in environmentalism. And so I'm gonna, if with permission, I'll approach and, and hand these to you.
Sure.
Um, but these are pertinent to the discussion that'll be on. Basically, it, it shows some of the items that were created. It, at, at some point, when I come back for a public speaking, I'll reference them.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, see no one rises. Is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
All right, so we're gonna close oral communications, and we're gonna move to the first public, first and only uh, public hearing item, uh, which is the um, Planning Commission Review and Recommendation to the City Council for Consideration of the Adoption of the Two Thousand and Thirty General Plan Housing Element Update, uh, G P twenty-one dash O two. Can we please have a, a staff report?
Yes, thank you Chair, and members of the Commission, as well as the public. Um, this item was continued, as you know, from the last month's uh, Planning Commission meeting. Uh, before we start this item, I just wanted to introduce the team. Um, we have our City Manager, Dean Alpro, here this evening. We have our Community Development Director, Kristy Allercon. And then we have our consultant team over here, Ryan Russell with Rencan, who helped with a lot of the housing inventory, as well as the environmental work. And then we have Ryan Lester with Minier Harnish Consultants. With that in mind, we'd like to hop in quickly into the presentation for this, uh, for the Housing Element Update. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for, uh, for having us today. Thank you um, uh, for, for being here to discuss the Housing Element. So uh, tonight, we're looking for uh, uh, the Planning Commission to review the Housing Element, um, and then to provide a, a recommendation to the City Council. Um, I'll go through this fairly quickly. Um, you've heard some of this before at our, at the previous meeting. Um, this is a new presentation, but I will go through it quickly. If, if you would like me to slow down, please just say so. Um, so the purpose of the meeting today, our agenda, will give uh, an overview of the revised Housing Element, which you have in front of you. We'll talk about the changes to the sites inventory. Ryan will step up and, and lead that section, as well as we have a new appendix, so we'll talk about that, where we really look at feasibility of each of the sites. Um, I'll go through um, as quickly as I can, a lot of the new actions um, in the revised Housing Element. Uh, policy document that the city is, is, that we're proposing the city commit to in order to respond to H C D comments. And then we'll wrap up by talking um, about next steps, give you a little bit more information as well. So um, the initial draft of the Housing Element um, was before you in March. Uh, we then revised um, uh, submitted the, the draft to, to H C D. Uh, you saw a revised draft in August, and then the current draft was released on the eight, on the nineteenth of October. Uh, we've been working very closely with the state, trying to figure out how to respond to their comments as best as we can, um, to, to try to work towards certification. And uh, and we also, we considered your comments in the previous meeting in our uh, updated revised Housing Element that's before you. Um, so again, why are we updating the Housing Element? Uh, it is required by state law, every jurisdiction has to have an adopted and certified Housing Element. Um, and there are some drawbacks to not having a compliant Housing Element. Uh, first of all, your, your general plan can be deemed inadequate or invalid, and then you have the potential to be sued over your land use decisions that involve housing. Um, and you could be sued either by the state or by a developer. And then uh, the second bullet point here, um, of the three, applicants can potentially bypass a local um, general plan and zoning code requirements if you don't have a compliant Housing Element. They can default to the state, it's something called the builder's remedy. This is actually happening in a lot of communities, it's something that's been going on for a long time. It's not new to this Housing Element cycle, but um, uh, you should know that it's out there, these projects that come in when you don't have a certified Housing Element and they're defaulting to state standards, they, they aren't seen by the Planning Commission, you don't get a chance to comment on them. Um, so it is a big change, you really do wanna have a, a certified Housing Element. And then there's, there's a lot of funding as well that's tied to just eligibility for the funding. Um, in order to be eligible, you have to have a compliant and certified Housing Element. Um, the bottom bullet point here uh, kind of sums it up, um, that the city receives about six million dollars in funds that require a certified and compliant Housing Element. And I'll go through those quickly on the next few slides here. Um, we've kind of outlined um, a lot of the funding that the city gets that requires um, uh, the Housing Element. So there's S B two funds, uh, that go towards the zoning code updates. Uh, C D B G funds, that's quite a bit, half a million dollars annually that the city gets. Uh, goes into a number of projects, they're listed there. Uh, the home program, uh, more than a hundred thousand dollars, um, annually. Um, the LEAP and REAP grants that the city has received uh, and are using for those, those projects. Specifically, the REAP two point O that's going towards the Permit Ready A D U program is a considerable amount of money. Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grants. Um, a lot of infrastructure and transportation grants are now being tied to having a certified Housing Element as well. Um, the Safe Streets and Roads for All Funding, uh, half a million dollars going towards the Multimodal Improvement Plan. California Housing Related Parks Program. Again, a, a considerable amount of money for the Thompson Park improvements and the Pioneer Park restroom. And then finally, the Statewide Park Program Grant, which is uh, uh, over three million dollars. So um, uh, you can see there's, there's over six million dollars in funding that the city receives that uh, that really, really require a compliant Housing Element. Um, so again, just to go through where we've been, uh, we released a public review draft in March for thirty day review. We then revised the Housing Element to respond to the comments we received and submitted that to H C D. H C D took ninety days um, to review it, uh, which is their, they have authority to. Um, and uh, during that time, we worked with them to provide some revisions based on their informal comments. Um, we made those public, of course, before we um, sent those back to H C D. And then uh, on August ninth, they um, the city received an official letter, comment letter from H C D. It had a number of comments, all those comments have to be addressed. Um, and um, you can see the comment letter in your attachments there. We've also put together a comment matrix that lists the comments and then what we did to make those revisions. Um, and you'll also see, uh, obviously before you, you have the revised Housing Element. I just wanted to point out, we left that in track changes, so you can see the changes from what you've previously reviewed. Um, that was one of the comments that you all had for us. Let's talk about these changes, let's see what they are. So we left them in track changes, so you can see them. So uh, any text in red is deleted, and new additions are in blue. So I just wanted to point that out for you all. Um, and now I'm gonna have Ryan come up and talk about the sites inventory.
Hi Commissioners, good to see you again. So I'm gonna be going over the site inventory revisions that we made, uh, based off of H C D's comments. Uh, but first, I wanted to go in just describing overall what the initial draft that you saw um, back before H C D's review, so we were able to meet the city's arena allocation with existing vacant and underutilized sites in the city, consistent with current land use and zoning. Only one site was required to be rezoned within that draft, um, site inventory. Um, a lot of other jurisdictions around the states are, are having to rezone pretty large areas of the city and increase their density to meet the arena allocation, so that wasn't the case for this initial draft. So H C D had a number of comments on the site inventory section, so I'll go through them briefly over the next couple slides. So their first comment was on capacity assumptions. So they, first, their, their uh, comment on residential capacity, they questioned whether we should be assuming a hundred percent of the max density on those sites. So they asked for additional analysis, which we went through, analyzed additional projects in the city, looked regionally at the county as well, and we ended up reducing the capacity assumptions on those sites a bit, for the residentially zoned sites. They also asked for capacity assumptions to be reduced on the mixed-use sites. Um, that's because those sites, while they allow residential, they also allow commercial. So we reduced the capacity assumptions on those sites from seventy-five percent to fifty percent. So with that, obviously, the site numbers went down a bit in the inventory. Um, and then we also reduced, or sorry, removed six sites in the inventory based off of public comment, as well as feasibility concerns. So that also um, had us reducing the overall numbers in the inventory. The state also asked us to expand the non-vacant site analysis within the, the Housing Element. Specifically, they wanted us to look at the identified sites that we had and compare them to sites in the city that were going through redevelopment and see if the conditions were the same. So we went forward with that in the revised draft, as well as adding a new appendix, which I'll go over on the next slide. And then I did wanna note that it is mandatory state regulation for the city to do this um, analysis, um, to look at whether the site's capacity and existing uses are significant impediments to housing. Um, including a site in the inventory doesn't require the property owner to develop. It doesn't require the city to develop, it just shows feasibility of, of projects that can come forward. So we went um, around the city and did a site visit at all the identified non-vacant sites. I believe a little over fifty were in the inventory, so this was provided in Appendix D. So we went through and conducted site visits, and we were looking at if there were any environmental constraints, taking a closer look at the structure, um, overall condition of the site, surrounding neighborhood, and the build-out potential and underutilization. So um, we added this additional analysis to the uh, Housing Element pursuant to the uh, H C D's comment on the non-vacant site analysis. Some additional revisions, we added six additional sites based off of public comment, as well as finding additional sites during site visits that were conducted. Um, H C D also had a comment on the small sites, so sites that we have in the inventory that have multiple parcels. They wanted additional information on why those sites were feasible to be consolidated. So as you see in the inventory, all of, a majority of those sites are under common ownership, and most of those sites have been developed together previously. So those are the, the additional details that we added into the Housing Element. And then, I believe I mentioned this at the last meeting last month, but we added an additional site to rezone at six, nine sixteen East Walnut Avenue. So I'll go over that and the other rezoned site in the next slides. But overall, similar to the previous draft, um, the site inventory remains in line with the overall vision of the city's general plan and zoning code, it's only recommending two sites to be rezoned. So this is the first site, it was in the inventory initially, located at sixteen hundred East Ocean Avenue. We're proposing to rezone it to mixed use with a planned development overlay. Um, there is existing property owner and developer interest in developing housing on this site, um, which is important to note. And then this is the new set, proposed site to be included in the inventory, Currently Zoned Business Park, proposing to change it to high density with a planned, um, development overlay. Um, site is currently vacant, next to medium-density residential to the east and southeast. And similar to the other site, uh, property owner interest in housing on the site as well. And then, just to note, so the, the units that we're assuming on all of the sites within the inventory, those are just a calculation, we have to look at state law and the requirements on allocating units. But ultimately, how the units are allocated and built in the city is up to the property owner, up to the market conditions, and, and how that plays out into the future. With that, turn it back over to Ryan.
Okay, uh, so next, we'll go through um, some of the new program actions, so you really, uh, we can, we can discuss what the Housing Element is suggesting that the city commit to in order to respond to H C D comments. Um, so uh, first, in Program Five, um, Development Process Monitoring, H C D wanted to see us add a midterm evaluation. That's their way of saying, we like your analysis, that there's no constraints, but we're, we're not totally buying it, so in four years, why don't you do another analysis? How's the process going? Are you denying projects, are you moving them through quickly, are they taking a long time? Um, so we've added that at their request. In the Municipal Code Update Program, we added language um, that H C D required, just for compliance with state law. Um, they very specifically said what they wanted to see. And then we added a commitment to allow emergency shelters uh, in the M U zone due to the new requirements of A B twenty-three thirty-nine. Uh, there's a number of new requirements there, so we've added um, that. But it, the Housing Element isn't stating that that's, it's, it's not making that happen. It's just, it's kind of saying, we're gonna, we're gonna look at this in the next two years. Uh, in the uh, Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing Program, we added an action uh, for coordination with um, City of Lompoc Transit to try to look for identi- uh, to try to identify opportunities to um, provide service for extremely low-income households. Um, in the Small Sites and Underutilized Parcels Program, uh, we added an action to adopt incentives to facilitate lot consolidation. Um, the city already requires it and is fairly good at it. H C D just wanted to see some additional incentives there. Uh, Mixed Use Development Program, we added actions to identify and adopt some incentives to uh, to help facilitate mixed use development, and then a commitment to monitor those development trends, to say, okay, we've assumed this much capacity, um, and this much development in the planning period, but how is it going? Um, and H C D's big on monitoring, we've added it to a number of programs because they just want cities to not just write their Housing Element, but to actually report back each year how it's going. So uh, in the uh, Program Fourteen, which is the A D U program, uh, again, a commitment to monitor development trends, see how's it, how is it going halfway through the planning period? Um, and are we seeing the, the number of A D Us from our program that we expected, and if not, what incentives should we consider? Uh, in Program Fifteen, uh, related to Bailey Avenue Corridor, uh, we added participation with LAFCO um, committees, uh, and, uh, and working groups on the urban ag interaction, as well as utilities there. Um, and we made sure to leave a commitment to continue to work towards annexation in that area. Program Sixteen, the Place-Based Strategies Program, uh, we added a commitment to revise development standards in the R two, R three, mixed-use and O T C zones to overcome constraints. H C D, this was a big comment from them, they wanted, they wanted to see a cumulative analysis of, of all of the development standards, so for them, it wasn't enough to say, yeah, our setbacks are only fifteen feet, and um, our height is, we allow up to three, three stories. They wanted to say, okay, now altogether, when you require open space, you require setbacks, you know, can you really achieve the maximum density that the zone allows? And we actually found that there were some complications in that, um, and there were some potential constraints. So uh, we added actions to work towards overcoming those constraints. Um, in the uh, Affordable Housing Incentives Program, we added a commitment to increase density in the R, in the R three zone to facilitate the arena, just to increase that to thirty-three dwelling units an acre. Um, and then the Available Sites Inventory Program, we added another monitoring um, action, just to monitor pending and approved projects, see how they're going, and to commit the city to engaging those applicants periodically. Uh, Missing Middle Housing, um, Program, we added some detailed actions to engage developers, to evaluate the zoning code, to look for additional constraints to missing middle housing, as well as opportunities, and then to potentially adopt incentives based on that evaluation. Uh, and in the Sites Inventory Program, again, another commitment to monitoring, um, to monitoring uh, production. Um, so uh, you know, that, I know there are a lot of changes in here, we've gone through it very quickly. Um, but that's the gist of it. Um, there were a number of H C D comments, we feel like we've addressed them uh, without going overboard, of course, we wanna discuss that with you today. But I just wanted to give some extra information here, so uh, public comments received, uh, that we've received are located in Appendix C. Um, comments from Commissioner Bridge, which were received on the eleventh, are shown in Attachment eleven. And then um, staff will also provide copies of any public comments received after the publication or posting of the staff report, so that you can see those as well. Um, as far as environmental review, um, an addendum to the final general plan E I R was completed. Um, that's Exhibit A there. Um, the addendum found that uh, potential environmental impacts of the focused general plan Housing Element Update are within the scope of the previously certified, uh, final E I R. Um, the addendum uh, does not cover the um, the program action to raise density in the O T C zone or in the um, in the R three zone. Those are further, those are future actions that will require their own, um, environmental analysis. And then um, just finally, staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the addendum for the project with the findings required by CEQA. Um, and they're contained in the attached resolution. So with that, um, I'll turn it back over to, oh, uh, next step. So uh, we're looking to receive a recommendation from you all tonight, um, on the Housing Element, and then to forward this recommendation to the City Council. Uh, we will then hold a public hearing with the City Council, um, scheduled for November twenty-first, to consider the revised Housing Element for adoption. And then, following adoption, we need to submit um, the adopted draft of the Housing Element to H C D for a follow-up sixty-day review. They get, um, they get, um, sixty, from this point, every time we submit a, a draft, they get sixty days. So they may, um, they will take the sixty days to review that, even after adoption, they'll take the whole time. They may have another comment letter with some cleanup stuff. Um, it's not uncommon to see, you know, more than two, um, comment letters. So uh, we may have to address some more comments and resubmit it, they'll get another sixty days. Um, I know, you may have heard that, that some cities are kind of struggling to get certified, and that's because H C D keeps giving them comments after sixty-day review periods. Um, all we can say is, we work with H C D as best as we can to, to, um, to uh, revise based on their comments and to meet what they are requiring, um, to try to minimize that. But they may, even after we do all of this, uh, even after the city adopts it, they may still have another comment letter. So we may have to come back to you with more revisions in the future. Um, that's just the, the nature of Housing Element Updates and H C D's authority. Uh, so with that, uh, I'll turn it back over to Brian.
Thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to, in closing, um, quickly go over the recommendations and just kind of rea- reiterate a few points that were brought up tonight. Um, first of all, uh, clarification for the audience, as well as the Commission, that the city of Lompoc doesn't build the housing. Private developers will come in, they're interested in the property, they will submit an application, either through a planning permit, or they'll go straight to our building counter to build these, um, on the sites. Our main focus here is to make sure we have enough land in our land inventory, which is um, shown in the Housing Element, but more importantly, is making sure that that land is zoned appropriately. That allows housing, we have a variety of zoning districts in town, we have the R one, we have R two, we have R three, we even have the mixed-use zone, the Old Town Commercial Zone. And then lastly, we even have an overlay called the H T overlay that also allows infill opportunities. Uh, we've done our very best, we believe, with this Housing Element Update. And not only that, we have added more and more flexibility for developers, applicants to come in and build housing. That's why we're proposing a P D overlay, which allows them, as what was mentioned earlier, to reduce or relax those development standards, might be lot coverage, it could be the setbacks, it could be the amount of landscaping. So H C D is looking to remove barriers to development, and so we did our very best to remove some of those barriers, even allowing a little bit, not much, of an increase in density in certain zones, which was mentioned tonight in the R two and R three. There was a concern by the Commission at the last meeting that some of these lots are not, um, feasible to build on. We feel like we did a really good job of going back, looking at that inventory, even removing properties from the inventory, walking the property, taking photos, I made many calls to property owners, can't do it to, to all, and I mentioned that at the last meeting, um, to just make sure that there, there are properties that can be built on. Now with that in mind, we're not required, we cannot do a full economic analysis or some, you know, very in-depth analysis, that's what a builder does, that's what a developer does before he or she or a company goes in and wants to make a commitment to build on these properties. The city can't do that. Um, and also, I feel very grateful for the city and the staff that we're only proposing two sites to rezone in the entire city. There's other cities in county, in the county, where they have to go in and they have to do a mass rezoning of a lot of different sites. It's very, very unpopular to do that. So the inventory that we have tonight, and the Housing Element that we have this evening, that we've presented, it's only two lots that are being proposed to be rezoned. So we're fortunate in that sense. Um, we've even provided two different recommendations, obviously, we'd love to get a recommendation of approval this evening, but if you feel like that's not possible, there's also a resolution for denial. Of course, we do strongly encourage you to recommend approval and move this forward to the City Council, so that we can start working on, um, projects in the city, and we can, we don't lose our land use, um, authority, and we don't have builder's remedy coming in. That's what we absolutely do not want to have. And also, we wanna continue to maintain the funding that we have for these programs. So there's a lot at stake tonight. Um, I'm available for questions, our consultant team, we have the City Manager here, our Director for our Department here. So um, thank you for listening to the presentation, and that does conclude the presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Harberson. Um, I guess we are going to open it for public comment, but I think before that, Mr. Ray Bushman has a couple of remarks.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so with the complicated documents like this, and so many different properties at stake, uh, it's common for there to be certain conflicts of interest, which is fine, we just need to deal with them. Um, so both Commissioner Bridge and Commissioner Chioni have, um, conflicts of interest on a couple sites, so they hopefully, the easiest way to move forward is to sort of segment this document. What we'll do is I'll ask, um, like, one commissioner at a time to leave the room, and then I'll explain that the specific issues that they have a conflict on, and the remaining commission can just discuss those issues, the public can comment on those specific issues. The commission will make an, uh, recommendation on those specific issues, and then the commissioner can come back in. Um, so hopefully, it will go smoothly, and I'll explain it as we go. Um, the first, I, I think we can start with Commissioner Bridge. As I understand it, Commissioner Bridge, can you state the property that's at your?
Uh, the property in interest is a three-three-three, um, North D Street. I have a, a partial ownership in, uh, the warehouse there.
Uh, and so before you leave, Mr. Commissioner Braxton had a question?
I just, Brian, I just had a quick question, I know before he leaves, right, just to clarify with me, and then the auditor. before he leaves, right, just to clarify with me and then the audience, before we get into discussing and approving. Of all of the sites, I know that we talk about, you know, it went through the EIR, the process, right? Some of the requirements go to the developer. But as we've looked and are wanting to put certain areas of, you know, housing on land, have we done an impact on utilities, right? Does, does sewer and power requirements, right? We have a lot that may only have an input of, you know, one, but we're going to add sixty-three. Right, has the utility division here done an impact of those sites?
As part of the addendum, the environmental addendum, it did look at utilities. Sewer, water, and electricity can be provided, as well as gas, for all of the properties in the inventory.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so I'll just wait one second here, and then I'll just give a brief explanation. And for members of the audience, this is the standard procedure, when there's a conflict of interest, the person just needs to leave the room so they don't take part in the discussion on the item. Okay, so Commissioner Bridge's property at three-three-three North D Street is within five hundred feet of both the R2 and the R3 Zone, so he's considered to have a conflict of interest on policies affecting those properties. There are two policies in the, or programs in the housing element that affect those properties or those zones. The first is, I'm going to refer to the, both the program number and the page, so the page is one dash twenty-three of the housing element. I'll give everyone a minute to get there. So, page one dash three, this is program HA sixteen. The very last line on the bottom, the program would increase the maximum height requirements to allow three-story residential developments in the R2 and R3 zones. So that's the first program at issue here. The second is on page one dash twenty-seven. This is program HA dot twenty-one. In the second column, under Actions and Objectives, down on lowercase letter H, the program is to increase the maximum density in the R3 Zone to thirty-three dwelling units per acre in line with the recommendation from the city's twenty-twenty-three housing market analysis. So those are the two programs that we'll discuss while Commissioner Bridge is out of the room. Finally, there was a proposal to include, Mr. Halverson, I'll let him explain this in further detail, but there is a proposal to include an alternative site, which is across the street from Mr. Bridge, or Commissioner Bridge's property, so while he's out of the room, we'll also have a discussion on whether or not to include that alternate site in the sites inventory. And you can go about this however you want, but I think it would be easiest to just, if, if members of the public could, who want to comment on this, could just comment on these specific issues now, and of course, you could comment on other issues later. And then we'll have a discussion of those issues now, and take a vote just on those specific issues now.
Okay, so just for my clarification, we're going to discuss, discuss these three specific issues now, then take public, well, take public comment, then discuss, then vote on these three issues, then it's time for me to recuse myself to discuss some other issues.
Correct.
And then we're going to come back all together and discuss the rest, like, the, the bulk of the document, right?
That's exactly right.
Because ultimately, we need to approve or, or deny the whole document, but we're going to have to separate the discussions because of the recusal conflict of interest.
That's correct, yeah, in this situation, state law allows us to kind of segment the discussion, which is what we're doing.
Got it, so we're going to segment the discussion that way, okay.
Correct.
So, at this point, I'm going to open public comment just for these three issues. So if someone wants to speak about these, specifically these three issues, this is the time to do so. And please state your name for the record.
Nicholas Gonzalez. So the three-story height is a new height, correct? And, so additional thing. And, and that's going to be in any place where there's an R3 designation, correct?
I believe R2 and R3.
R, R2 and R3. So, yeah, I, I wouldn't necessarily be, I, I understand we like to achieve a certain density, but some of these R2s are adjacent to R1s. That's going to cause a significant clash for a lot of, uh, single-family residences within the community. I, I think there should be more site-specific information than the general R2 and R3, as you're going to create conflicts all through town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Anyone else? Please state your name for the record.
Susan Gallagher. Hearing where those two addresses are, knowing that density could be that high, I agree with Nick on that. And to, as a profession, as a real estate agent, I don't have people coming to me and saying, I want to live in high-density areas, they come to this town for the peace and quiet that we have, and the space that we have, and I think we need to reconsider how high these are going and how close they are. And are they required to do parks for the children and open space? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alright, is there anyone else on the phone?
No one on the phone.
Okay. Commissioners, what do we think about this? Commissioner Braxton?
I kind of agree that we're kind of impeding, you know, on current housing market and an individual, if I have a house, right, and I'm, I'm increasing that load to, you know, a three-story property, right? What does that, what impact does that do to my house, the value of my home, right? We also have to take that into consideration, where we could potentially impact other citizens as we make these decisions for that. It's, it's, it's just, it's, to me, it's just a really tricky thing, you know, we're kind of have to do it on this hand, but on this hand, we kind of got to, got to do what's right for the community. So I'm really torn.
If you have a comment, Commissioner Gonzalez?
I agree with Commissioner Braxton, on one hand, it is, we do need that housing, but then, again, is it going to deter people from Longpoke?
So this was not a requirement that was imposed by HCD, right? This was something that, I guess, what, what prompted this proposed requirement to be added to the, to the element?
I can expand on that, Chair. So there's kind of two things that are going on with this. One is trying to remove barriers to development in order to make properties more attractive and to draw people in to build. But secondly, it, it hasn't been finished completely, but there was a market study that looked at, you know, what are some impediments from a zoning code standpoint to infill development? And so one of those things was density. So you could slightly increase the density, there was also mention of, you know, reducing park, covered parking, development standards are also mentioned. So those two factors, removing barriers, and then also a study that we're working on, to try to to bring more incentives to developers who want to build housing, that, those are probably the two factors that, that made us say, hey, let's
Okay, so this is, this is, this was more of a, an interpretation of this, of, of the staff of a requirement from the county, so if, in order for us to achieve certain, a certain goal of removing barriers, this is one of the things that we could do, would be to allow for three stories. Right, so it was not specifically requested by HCD that we add three-story. Yeah, thank you, I just want, again, I just want to understand how strong this requirement is in terms of the, whether it was, was a direct suggestion or, or rather imposition from the county, or was it just a way to, to achieve a more general goal?
Yeah, so the, the comment that this, this suggested action was generated from was HCD saying, hey, you know, you said that you allowed two stories, and that's not a constraint, but what happens when you add in the setbacks, and you add in open space requirements and things like that? Can you really achieve the density that's allowed in those zones? And so, in the analysis, we, in the housing element, we added an analysis where we looked at those cumulatively. And what we saw was, if your, if your lot coverage is restricted to fifty or sixty percent, and you have two stories, well, you know, really, you're, if you're allowing twenty dwelling units an acre on, on a, on a parcel, right, and you limit it to fifty percent of the parcel, then you're trying to get to twenty dwelling units an acre in two stories in that small space. It's really hard to do. So, in order to respond to this comment, we needed to make a suggestion to adjust either the lot coverage or the height. Right?
Yeah, exactly, so was, was adjusting lot coverage not considered, instead of allowing fifty percent, allowing sixty, seventy, seventy-five percent instead of raising, so horizontally rather than vertically?
Yeah, so with the R2 and R3 zones, if you prefer, we could allow more lot coverage instead of height, working with staff that, and looking at the recommendations in the previous report, that's what we chose to suggest. But you could, you could allow a hundred, you know, full development of
Yeah, I mean, a hundred is, to me, is a little, is a little, you know, excessive, but we could probably look into, again, allowing more horizontal coverage, rather than going up and, and see. So, I guess my question is, can we make these recommendation of making these, again, recommended changes and still move this thing to the city council?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
I'll just speak to that briefly.
That was one of my main questions for the night. Do we have to take this thing face value and move it forward, or can we move it forward with comments? Okay, so that's good, because that's, that gives us a little bit more, yeah.
I'll just speak to that, so there's a recommended resolution, but that's just something that we come up with beforehand, if you just kind of want to adopt it as-is. But we can adjust that resolution as you direct, so for example, you could say, we recommend moving this forward with X, Y, and Z changes, that's fine.
Okay, so
Chair, could I make one more point, real quickly, just to add on? So, one of the reasons why we want to keep our land use control is that if a project comes in and it's being reviewed by the commission, they could say, three stories is not acceptable, reduce it to two stories. Maybe it's blocking views, maybe it's creating a canyon effect, which is something that's in our architectural review guidelines. So you have that ability to say, we're only going to approve it at two stories. So, again, that's the control that we want, we want that discretion when these projects come in, we want the neighbors to be able to have input, and we want to work with the developer or builder to make sure that a project is appropriate for each site. We can't go and, and superimpose a project on each site and say it's going to work or it's not going to work, but the development standards are, are kind of strict, and so that's why we've recommended a PD overlay.
Yeah. So I, to me, it's just a matter of, like, what are we going to do first? And I'm more inclined to try and do it horizontally, and then if it doesn't work in the future, we revisit it. By future, I mean future cycles. This is my idea, I mean, I'm, I want to open it back up to, to the commissioners and, and
No, I agree, that, that's kind of where I was going, I, I think you capitalize on the lot coverage this way instead of that way, right, so but it doesn't, so we're not restricted, then, as this plan has been redlined by the state, there's flexibility with the state, right, that we're not going to be held, like, this lot at this location was zoned for this, at this number of stories, right? That's the flexibility we have, as this plan goes for the concurrence with the state, right?
Yes, I mean, ultimately, your recommendation's going to go to council, and then later, there'll be code updates that again, will be reviewed by the commission and the council.
Can I make a quick statement, Chair?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
So I, I heard your comment about the floor area ratio. It looks like there's a recommended change already in here to allow seventy-five percent. I think seventy-five percent was something you had stated as a percentage. And then, the only other thing I wanted to add is three stories is the maximum, it's not saying that every single site can go up to three stories, it's just if it works for the planning commission and that site, and you would approve it, it gives a developer flexibility in there may be some of these sites that three stories will be perfectly fine. I think we do see that in other jurisdictions where it works, but I'm not, I, I just want to make sure you guys are understanding, because I sometimes have a hard time understanding these codes.
Yeah, 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 no, and this was, this was kind of also the remark that Mr. Halverson
Yeah.
made, like, it's, it's, it's always going to be up to the planning commission to approve, to approve or, or, or deny certain projects, what I'm saying is that, how about we, we first explore the possibility of extending the lot coverage before we allow a third story? Just as a manner of kind of giving a guideline of what would we prefer to see, right? So I just, you know, it seems to me like maybe the, the lot coverage extension hasn't been explored enough, and maybe we can, we can put a recommendation in our, in our motion to just explore the possibility of extending lot coverage and see if the density can be achieved that way. You know, and then, we, we all know there's going to be back, more back and forth. It's just so that we can move forward tonight. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Where in the element does it show the FAR increase?
Page I twenty-three? That's where I'm looking at, so under the tab, I'm assuming you have the same.
The one right above it, okay, I see now. So then, if we do have the FAR increase, then we can just strike out that thirty-three unit.
Only in the MU.
Oh, sorry, the three-story.
I see.
Unless you wanted to increase FAR.
Our attorney clarified, that would only, that point seven-five would only apply in the MU zone, MU zone.
That, that's the OTC, right, it doesn't talk about the, our through and our
I tend to do that, I read just the beginning, and then I quit.
Yeah, yeah, so so, yeah, I think we need to look into that in the R2 and R3 zones as well.
But it is, because it is a development standard, and correct me if I'm wrong, attorney, if, if we have that PD overlay that we're proposing, they could, as long as it was consistent with the general plan, so we'd have to have both of them bear one another.
So by looking at that increase, what does it do to our densities, can we now then be able to achieve our density goals without the, the third story addition, I didn't, I didn't hear that necessarily stated. What I've heard is that with the current lot coverage, if we want to achieve the, the the density goals, we need to add a third story. So, what I'm saying is that let's look at increasing the lot coverage and see if that takes us there, even without adding a third story. So, that's, that would be my recommendation, but we, you know, unless I hear a motion, we can still discuss it, I guess.
So we would adjust it, so it would include in the R2 and R3 for the seventy-five?
Yeah, so
And then strike out the three-story?
My recommendation would be to strike out the three stories and explore, actually, my recommendation would not be to necessarily strike out the three story, but just explore an increase in lot coverage to see if it achieves the density goal without a third story. So that would be my recommendation to approve these. I guess that would be my motion, I haven't, I haven't stated that as a motion yet, but that would be
Right now, the maximum height is two stories?
Yes.
Okay, so then it would just be straight?
Yeah.
Would be
So
Do you want to make your motion? Do you want to make your motion?
I think I'm going to make my motion, and emotion, my motion will be to approve these three issues or points, but with a recom, sorry, is there a comment?
My only comment is, one of the three things was the consideration of the alternative site. And we haven't had any discussion of that, so it's not clear to me whether you're recommending that or not.
Yeah, okay, the, so you mean the site that was added?
I'll let Mr. Alveson explain about that site.
Yeah, let's go ahead. I'd like to put it on the large screen, so maybe camera, you can pull that up. That's, if you, if you look at your packet, that's going to be, so if you look at attachment 11 in your planning commission packet, fortunately, I don't have a page, but if you go to that attachment, it's alternate three. It says between Chestnut and East Laurel on east side of D Street. That's, well, just go ahead and put in 333 North D Street. It's across the street from there. Yeah, North D Street. There's a little bit of background. That's the reason why I wanted to pull it up. Then you'll have to take the zoning layer off and put the aerial photograph. So essentially, why she's doing that, we highly, highly recommend not rezoning this site for a couple reasons. One is the city has been in the works for seven years of building their transit center on this site. Yeah, so go, go to the east.
So is this by the baseball field?
Yep. John Mansfield. So we, we really want to keep that site. We have funding in place. We have engineer drawings already. So please don't rezone a site so that the transit center becomes non-conforming. So that's, that's the insight and, and possibly lose funding for our major project.
Even if it's mixed use, it would be non-conform, the transit would be non-conforming?
Well, housing is not going to be built there. We have an approved project there.
I, I, I know, but we know there's a lot of sites that we put in the inventory where we know houses were not going to be built, but, but there's still like, the potential is there.
Just trying to get the, so it's basically right there. You see the, the eyes.
No, I know, I, I, I remember that. That's the Johns, Johns Mansfield.
So that's already an approved project?
I am, I'm aware that the transit maintenance center is supposed to go there, but what I'm saying, like you say, like if we rezoned it, then it would make it non-compliant, even if we, even if it's mixed use?
I'd have to look at the mixed use zone. It, it just, it wouldn't be advisable to be going and rezoning something because the whole purpose of the rezone is that you're planning for housing, and housing is not going to be built at that site.
And that's city-owned?
Yeah, and it's not needed. We're not short on our inventory, so we're, we're meeting our inventory with, with what we have now.
This is to add this site, correct?
As an alternate rezoned site.
As an alternate, but then we would have to re, well, essentially, he's asking if we would rezone it?
That's what Commissioner Bridge was asking. He's saying, hey, these are sites that you need to look at for rezoning. That's what his packet, his comments, right?
So we would add it, but then we would have to rezone it?
Yeah, it would, it would, your recommendation would go to the council, and then the council would say yea or nay on that, and then we're going to be coming back actually next month with those two rezoned sites that are in your packet that are part of the housing element.
So this would be a third rezoned site?
Well, he's got, I think, a total of.
Well, I know, but this particular one would be a third, and then I know there's others that.
That's correct.
He can, yeah, participate in discussion and.
And I, I have talked to Commissioner Bridge about this site, and he, he didn't have all the information regarding the approved project.
Okay, no one has commented on it. I don't know if I can reopen. Someone wants to talk about it, I know, but can I reopen the public comment? Yeah, okay, ask me to reopen the public comment if someone wants to speak about this. See if there's someone interested, so. Mr. Gonzalez?
Nicholas Gonzalez, yeah, I'd just like to be able to come back. If, if there's information that's coming front that wasn't, was not presented prior to public discussion, I think it's only appropriate to open up public discussion again, so I appreciate that, so that we can comment. I understand what staff is saying in that, I, you know, when I was on the planning commission previously, that project initiated and went, and went through as a public facility site. And I understand that, leave it as a public facility site. I mean, there's no, I, I understand that it, it's a site that could be considered, but I think that is one site that probably would be, you know, as far as I know, is going to, going to stay that site unless there's other, some other compelling item. And that's just my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. All right, yeah, I think, oh, there you go, sorry. Stay tuned for the record, please.
Michael McGlinney, I'm sorry that this, really, this comment really doesn't have to do with this particular site, but going back to, as a rebuttal to your horizontal expansion, some of the things you have to consider too is stormwater, things like that. The self-containment of that site, whether it be parking, open space for recreation, stormwater. So as you increase the, the area of the allowable area to 70 or 75%, you lose the opportunity to park. You lose the opportunity to put landscaping in for play yards. You lose the opportunity to keep stormwater on-site, which is something that you're going to have to deal with on these, some of these issues. Another point to make is with the PD overlay, that's a great idea. But I also think that you need to consider too, cluster zoning. MU, R2, R3 as clusters to go vertical. As in, R2 backs up to an R1, you know, maybe not so much.
Okay, thank you. That is actually a probably a good idea. I didn't think about that. So can we consider, or can we put a limitation on the three-story allowance to sites that do not abut R1s? Is that, was that the, can the general sense of your?
Well, you have to come speak at the microphone, please. Hi, I'm McGlinney, and I think that, that's, that's a great idea, and that's what I think what the PD overlay will do, is that it now has to come before you guys want it abuts an R1. But as you, you use these clusters with the higher densities, both with mixed use and, and the R2 and R3, you know, there's an opportunity there to go vertical. And I think you also have to define what is three-story. Rather look at height limitations. You know, with today's volume and, and what we're doing with some of the architecture, you know, a single-story house used to be eight feet plus, you know, four for the roof. Now you're going nine-foot plates, you know, 14-inch joists, duct spaces and all that stuff, and then you've got the added for the, the roof element. So you're looking at much taller than, say, 30 feet. You're looking at 42 to 45 feet now. So I think you, I think we need to study the, give a specific height limit.
Okay.
And just to clarify, when the project comes in, again, if you have the discretion, if you want to limit it, then you do have that discretion when it comes in.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going to weigh in on that. I, I don't mean to disagree with staff. I think, just to be clear, if the zoning code says that three stories are permitted, and they come in with a three-story project, you, you can't tell them it has to be shorter.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Even if there's concerns regarding either the architecture or other findings that are made that the commission comes up with, that it doesn't meet those standards or those findings in our code?
Basically, under housing law, if you have a housing project that comes in and it meets the objective development standards in the code, the only reason you can deny it is if you can state a specific adverse impact that is related to that development standard, which I, off the top of my head, I don't know what that would, I mean, those are very few and far between, so I, I would suggest that if, if we change the code to say three stories is permitted, there would be very few situations in which you would have discretion to deny that height, just to be clear.
All right, it's good to know. Yes, it is open. It is open.
The challenge here, I think, is a little bit difficult for the public is that we're being asked, you're, you are representatives to vote on this thing that's been given to you in a black and white without really letting you know, here's the gray area. We don't really have to. We're just telling you what to do. And that seems very disingenuous in the, but I can't go back now that we know in this thing on the first comments to say, hold on a sec, why are we going so high? Why can we cluster this? And so there's a great deal of grayness here that's being directed without facts. It's to meet some objective perhaps, but it's a very interpreted approach to it. And so I, I don't know as a whole that this is fair for the public to know just as comments on the three stories. Because to you, to our challenge here, I think we had a three-story property that went in for low income, and we couldn't say no. And we had fire saying we don't have their proper life and safety, but we couldn't say no. And to say it won't really happen, I feel like it's already happened. So we have to be very careful here that we're not just letting the bag, the cat out of the bag even further without knowing that, oh, well, you could have had a drawstring on it. You could have had a clear bag. You could have had these things that help us maintain the culture and the makeup of our community with good ideas coming in such as, well, there's no, nothing but R2s here, why not add another one that can conform and meet those types of objectives for the long run. But this conversation seems very disingenuous to the public to have an open dialogue in that fashion. So I just caution that we're being told to do something that we're not really having to do.
Thank you.
And we do have one person on the line too, as a public speaker.
Oh, okay, let's hear.
Oh, we lost them. They hung up.
We lost connection?
Yeah, they, they hung up.
All right. What do we think? I don't know at this point. I feel like, I feel like this, this third-story issue is, is a little bit, I don't know, I feel like there could have been other alternative ways to, to meet this requirement rather than the third story. Commissioner Gonzalez?
So then we should just strike it out. If he's saying that, if they meet the objectives, then they can build it. But if you don't want that next year R1, strike it out.
Like, strike out the, the requirement, but without, without increasing the horizontal?
No, you can.
Oh, okay.
You can adjust it so it's not only an MU, but also applies to R2 and R3 for the increase of FAR, but then you're going to strike out the increase of the three-story.
Is that the?
I think, I think we have to, right?
That's not exactly what my motion was, but if you want to move for that, we can certainly do that. My motion was simply to investigate, my motion, what I want to, I have a motion yet, but what I want to motion was to investigate an increase in horizontal coverage to see if we then can remove the third-story requirement. You seem to be willing to just remove the third-story requirement, so I, I will let you do the motion if you want to.
Quick question for Commissioner Gonzalez. There's the floor area ratio that we all clarified. Increasing that is only for the MU. So is part of your motion increasing it for the R2 and R3 as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And then are we also motioning for the alternate site? So we should discuss that?
Yes, so the, sorry, we haven't discussed the alternate site yet. It's true. I would be in favor of leaving that out, but.
Me too. I know that there's money that's invested in that, right, in grant money, so we got to leave that as is.
Okay, so do you want to, do you want to make your motion, Commissioner Gonzalez?
So I motion to allow up to 75% residential floor area and maximum FAR for residential uses, 1.5 in the MU zone, and add it to the R2, R3, strike out the increased maximum height requirements to three-story, and then leave out the alternate site.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say nay because again, it's not exactly what my motion was, but, so, motion passes two, one. I guess then it's my turn to.
Yeah, so, and then just to clarify, so at the end, when there's a vote on whether to approve or, or to recommend or not recommend the whole thing, it will include this in it.
Obviously.
So if someone could invite Mr. Bridge to come back in and then.
I need to leave.
Yeah, and if you could state, if you could state the reason for your conflict.
Uh, okay, I guess I, I own property on 900 Clements Way, and that's, that would be, I guess, close, too close to one of the items or the sites that are in the inventory, correct?
Yeah, to within 500 feet of a site in this item, sure.
Within, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll, we'll refrain from any discussion until Commissioner Chione is out of the room, but for the sake of the commission and also the public, the site in question, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, but I believe it's site number 19. It's, and you can see it. If, if you turn to page two dash 1.45, sorry, two dash 145, is what I meant, which is the map with all the sites, inventory sites. And I believe it's site number 19, which you'll see in the southeast.
You said two dash 45?
Two dash 145, sorry, 145. And the address is?
It's 913 Clements Way, and it's actually site 19 in the sites inventory.
So the only item, the only sort of point of discussion here is whether or not to include, there's two things. The first is whether you all want to include this site in the sites inventory. And second thing is there is a proposal in the housing element to add all sites in the sites inventory to the PD overlay. So it doesn't, doesn't change the underlying base zoning, but it adds the zone to the PD overlay, which is, allows for flexibility in development standards. So the two questions you're considering are, do we want to add this site to the sites inventory? Or recommend that it stay in the sites inventory? And B, do, does the commission want to recommend rezoning this site so that it is within the PD overlay zone? Those are the two questions before you. And we can also take public comment on those questions.
And we do have that site on the screen. You can see that's aerial photograph. It's a basic vacant lot on that street. There is, there is a slope, but I've seen lots in the city that are much, much steeper than that, or someone could build on it. The PD overlay is ideal because it will allow them to reduce some of the development standards, which would allow that lot to be even more feasible to be built on. So I'm just wanting to give a little bit of background on that. I don't have any problem with that. If we want to move forward and be done. I'll make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation.
We have to open to public comment first. Should I, can we open to public comment?
Nicholas Gonzalez, I actually looked at that lot for acquisition at one point in time, and there was significant amount of constraint, so the PD overlay would afford some discretion to make it a usable lot. That being said, it's a vacant parcel. What else would you do with that parcel other than a park or an open space? Which, these are the type of housing sites that we need. We need housing sites for market rate housing and for, you know, marketing, and for regular income home buyers. This is the type of housing that would attract individuals of higher income that'll help balance.
balance better the economy here. So I'd be in favor of an over, of a PD for that if it would enhance the capacity to develop that site into a market rate site.
And under the inventory, that's categorized as the above moderate.
Susan Gallagher, on that particular site there, it's not a very deep lot, and then it goes straight into the canyon, so I can't even see more than one house there. And it's in a neighborhood where you have all the single-family homes, I just don't think it has the space to put the houses on, one or two, whatever.
It would just be one house.
Oh, it's one house?
For above moderate income.
Just one house.
That's what they're suggesting right now?
Yes.
What's the PD overlay thing?
Would you like to explain?
Okay, I'll go into this again. Okay, so the PD overlay allows them to reduce standards. For example, you see how those houses usually have a 15-foot setback for the garage? It would allow the garage to be closer, so let's say they proposed a 10-foot setback for that garage, that would be acceptable.
Back from the street you're talking about?
Yeah. Side yard setbacks could be reduced, the rear yard setback could be reduced, but I don't think the rear yard is really going to be an issue because there is a slope in the rear. So landscape requirements could be reduced, lot coverage, so, yeah, the whole night yard, it's perfect for that site.
I make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Someone could invite Mr. Bridge to come back in? And I'll just make a brief comment before discussion starts again, after, sorry, after Commissioner Chione comes back in.
I guess it's much better. It was a different factor.
Okay, so going forward, just to, you know, state the, state the principle here, so there shouldn't be any more discussion of items that have already been considered tonight since you're all back up at the dais, but anything else in this document is, is up for discussion now, so have at it, and including, and we should take public comment on the whole rest as well.
Yeah, we're going to open public comment for the rest of this very comprehensive document, so whoever needs to come to the microphone, Mr. Gonzalez again, I'm going to say your name now.
Nicholas Gonzalez.
By now.
So first of all, I'm a little disappointed that we started off the meeting with some fear tactic. I'd like to know what section of the law states that a project that was approved and funded, when the city housing element was in place, will now be taken back? And then cite, in this cycle, any municipality or county that has had their funding pulled back. Okay? Secondly, I gave you handouts previously. There's been a concerted effort by people who consider themselves ag and environmental power brokers to completely change the face of this community. And when I look at this document, I become very frustrated because we're being forced to remake the entire community. We're being forced to have the H Street overlay, the, the Ocean overlay, and then all the different sites that, I, I've been in the, in the industry, the real estate industry for 30-something years. I've tried to finance numerous parcels that are on the site industry. And I know it's not your job to prove economic feasibility, but the HCD wants to see some type of nexus of the ability to actually produce this housing. Why are we going through this exercise if it's not to provide housing for the community? And you're being told, let's just get it done, and then we'll go back and we'll revisit. For some reason, these power brokers don't want the Bailey Corridor developed. And the Bailey Corridor, even though it is not presently in our sphere of influence, has been denied because we show no need to go into the Bailey Corridor. It's a chicken and the egg scenario here. We keep being told we can't go there because we have this, and we're saying if we pass this, we prove we don't need housing. It's like, come on. My, my suggestion is, you, you can look at some of the ADU sites, these can go to low income because they can be built for about $100,000, you can put covenants on them, you can do incentives like low-interest loans, and, and you can create low-income housing that's dispersed through the whole community and not make concentrations of poverty in any one given area. And then you can have the Bailey Corridor as your scapegoat for market rate housing, rather than sticking all the market and moderate rate within the ADUs, or going into parcels that are going to be, look great on the books, but in all reality, are not going to be built. And I know we're going to come back, but this is an eight-year document, eight years, we're not going to be able to go back. And once you pass this document, guess what? That agencies that sued us before for violation of our general plan, and, and because of the other items that they implemented, those documents show that we started our general plan in 2008, and then they changed all these things as we were trying to complete our general plan. Every time we would do one thing, they'd put something else in front of us. Make this housing element work. Let's not just go through the exercise of creating something that meets HCD's general outline. I believe that those site inventory, HCD, there's an item there that says very specifically, and when I looked at the resolution on the, on, on what was done, it says will be put in the resolution. So show the, show us the nexus, it's, show us the nexus of how you're going, how these sites, you know, can be done. And then on, on the action item, it said will be done in the resolution. So I'd like to see where that is, because I read the resolutions and I see nothing to that effect that addressed that HCD for 50% of the sites. And that's, it said, how are you going, 50% of the sites have existing structures, how do you make that work? And it says will be put in the resolution, and I haven't, I haven't seen that. I don't know where it's at, it, it's not there, but it's not in the two resolutions that are presented to you tonight. Again, we have time to make this right, make it right. Re-look at those sites, make those sites work, and we have the entire Bailey Corridor that if we can't shove everything with high densities and changing the neighborhoods completely and changing the whole face of the city, if we can't shove it all in in H and Ocean and in these infill sites, you have the Bailey Corridor to say, look, we tried, we don't want to change the entire face of our community, we have the ability to go to this other area and, and consider that. Let's make it work right the first time and go back and change it if we need to.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Brian Bridge. Looking at the map over the last couple of weeks is extremely spotty, and I think there's a lot of great intent, I think there's some really good tweaks that we've achieved, but as a whole, to be afforded the approve or disapprove, I would recommend just reject it in its entirety. So at least as a dais, you can stand up and say, it's not meeting the level that our community truly wants, and at least we can sit here and say to the council, it's not met that. And the language around Bailey Corridor, I mean, you look at that little swath of land, you could take almost every single recommendation and plop it into that area. So it's again, disingenuous from our staff to say, we're going to go do this task, check the box, let's go on to our next one. It just stinks, in my opinion, to not force the ultimate objective of what our community planned with Bailey. And if this is our opportunity, I just don't for the heart of me believe in any one second anybody's coming in to long-poke to stress builder remedy as an option. That, there's just nobody doing that in our areas, other than low-income projects which have already been pushed through. So take advantage of at least standing on and saying, it's good, sure, it can do its thing, but we don't accept it, and that's our recommendation to council. Because this staff is going to go to council, they are going to suggest that this is the best they can do, this is the best they're ever going to be able to do, but in no way, shape, or form does it really encompass what the community's opinion is of it. At least in an objective standpoint to go, yeah, that's good or bad, yeah, this or that, but that's a very spotty map. And to say we're going to execute, I think the state's going to come back and hold our feet to the fire. So they're not going to be here, you guys will. Can you execute on that?
Thank you. Any other comments? Is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone.
Okay, so we're going to bring you back to the dais, and we're going to start a discussion. What do we want to do about this, commissioners?
I have a couple of questions. There's a lot of work been put into this document, obviously, so perhaps I didn't give it the reading it deserved. Where I started to struggle at a top level rather than digging into the elements which will come, is on the, there's a table in here, I don't know if I can find it now, but it talks about RENA, and it said what the active projects met. Maybe the staff can help get me to that table.
It's 2116, and that's where the RENA allocation is at, and I believe you're referring to 2118, planned, approved, impending projects, is that what you were thinking of, Commissioner Bridge?
Give me a second, you're quicker than I am.
If you have the tabbed version, Housing Resources.
2116, thank you.
Okay.
Is there another table that matches this one that tells me how we met it? Is there, you know, I expected to see a table, for example, that said, well, we, we did 43 of the low-income in ADUs, and we did vacant lots, we.
Yeah, that's, that's what we do with, but have to look for it in here, but the general plan and report every year that we put out, it shows our progress, and I think there's a table.
No, I don't mean that.
So I can go ahead and, what's that?
How we meet the intent of our new numbers. I don't mean how have we done, because there's nothing we can do about that.
Could you clarify what you mean by that?
I think what he's referring to, Brian, is we have the RENA number of, you know, let's just say 2248. We're communicating to the state that we are zoned to hit 2,248 units. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, I'm not as versed as you in this document, but I believe that comes in the analysis of the vacant sites, is that correct?
I think it's the table, it's the table starting on 2-135.
Yeah, so that is the identified vacant and underutilized sites, and if you were to look at those various numbers, so to speak to your question, Commissioner Bridge, is there a summary page at the end of this entire table? I don't believe there is, but perhaps there is something.
Okay, but at the end of the vacant one, where we have on 2144, we have, if I can read that right, 89 lower income, 366 moderate income, and 552.
It's 489, yeah.
It's 489.
Okay, 489, 366, and 552.
So that table, it helps, so when we're talking about these, just specify the table and then the page, this is table H45, used to be H44, H45, called Progress Towards RENA, and it's on page 2-146.
146.
Yeah, I think that's what you're looking for, Commissioner Bridge.
There we go, okay.
And so that, that is a great table, for example, a lot of people bring up the ADUs, and it's showing.
All right, so now, now here comes my question. The first table I showed you had very low, low, but after that, I never see very low again. What happened?
Ryan Lester, would you like to just clarify that, or Ryan?
For the, for the purposes of the, the site inventory, you're allowed to combine.
I'm sorry, that was too quick and too loud.
Sorry. For the purposes of the site inventory, you're allowed to combine very low and lower income as one category.
Okay, so if I see somewhere where you're saying we're meeting the RENA of low income, I should assume that includes very low income in it?
Yeah, depends on the project that comes forward.
Okay. All right, if that answers my question, thank you, from a top level. Do you want me to continue with my, just go from front to back, or?
Please. Yeah, let's, let's group all the.
All right, I'll try to go quickly, because.
You take the time you need.
All right.
We need to make sure that we make a decision here, so.
Okay, on 123, the table Place-Based Strategies.
Was that 1-23 or 2-?
123, 1-23. Table, I don't know where the table titles are, but it's HA dot 16. Okay, I've heard it say several times that we only rezoned two sites, but that looks to me like a rezone to increase the density. And I'm told that, I believe I was told, or I heard, maybe that's a better way to say that, this is not in the inventory, and if both those are true, then my recommendation is we remove this increase in density. If that's not true, if I misinterpreted that.
It's the one we reviewed with.
Clarify, sorry, just for clarification, my understanding is that you're not talking about the last bullet point?
No, I am not talking about the last.
Right, you're just talking about the rest of it.
This is the first one, because I can't talk about the last bullet point.
Right, just wanted to make that clear, thank you.
Yep, nope, it's the very first bullet point. So are we vote, I, I did, I'm sure I missed some statements in the start of this when I was out. Are we doing these piecemeal, or do we go through and?
We did the first items piecemeal because there were, there were accusations needed, but everything else, I was hoping to be able to do a full.
Okay, then we, we're going to have a bookkeeping issue then, that we keep track of.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully staff's going to help us doing that, but I mean, if we can, I would like to, to just do one motion, but I mean, we can do it however best.
Either way is fine, so however you guys feel best to keep track of the issues. I mean, if you wanted to, if somebody wanted to keep notes and then you read off 20 things at the end and say, this is what we want on all these things, you could do that, or if you just want to do them as they come up, so you don't forget them, you can do that as well.
Well, the other issue is I'd like to know whether I have consensus or not.
Yeah.
And not try to argue it at the end, or discuss it, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'm, I'll make a motion that this recommendation, that the density remains where it was, and that we don't set up in this plan that we're going to increase the density by almost 50%, or 100%. The density right now is 44.
In the OTC?
In the OTC.
Yeah, I just want to clarify real quickly, so that was in the previous housing element that the commission reviewed last month, but now there's some changes that are located in blue, but he's talking about the black text, change, not allowing that. Certainly, if you want to change it, we don't want it to go from 44 to 75, that's an option. That wasn't included in the environmental review, we'd have to go back and do further environmental review to increase density from 44 to 75. So in that sense, it would, it would come back to you anyways, but obviously tonight, if you want to remove that, you could, but I just wanted to add some clarification to that.
But from that level of analysis, right, what drove that increase that large? Right, as I, as I go through this whole document, right, and I'm seeing numbers, I'm seeing like significant increases, right, not like a, not like a 10%, a 15%, I mean, 50% to 100%, that's a significant increase.
Yeah, so I can explain, so the reason why there's a significant increase, there's a couple of reasons. So there's no secret that downtown has been struggling for many, 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 many years. So a lot of the lots in downtown are small, and a developer comes in and can't build maybe the number of units that they want to. So those lots become more attractive because now you can work with something that has a higher density when it's a very small lot. So it's kind of twofold, it's one, to provide more incentives to build downtown. Also, in downtown, it's restricted right now, 50% of the floor area has to be commercial. They can't do 100% residential. So now, there's also in this plan to up the amount of residential from 50 to 75, and the commercial would be 25%. So now there's also in this plan to up the amount of residential from fifty to seventy-five, and the commercial would be twenty-five percent. So in short, you're adding incentives, you're removing barriers, and you're making lots in downtown, which downtown has been struggling, to, to bring more housing downtown, and a higher density is going to attract more developers and more builders to look at downtown and get people walking around and make, so to speak, you know, downtown Lompoc a stronger town if you have more people walk around and shopping and tenant spaces most likely reopen because there's more people and more business to do in downtown. So that's kind of in a nutshell why that's increased.
Commissioner Bridge, can you explain a little bit more in detail your aversion to this, so we can?
Certainly. This plan, if you look at the sites, site forty, site thirty-six, site, I don't have, one oh seven East Ocean, five fourteen South I, four twenty-eight North I, four eighteen North F. Those are all kind of old town areas, if not strictly in that overlay. Twenty-nine low income in forty, twenty-six low income in thirty-six, eighteen in one oh seven, eleven in five fourteen, thirteen in four twenty-eight and twenty in four eighteen. You've just been told by the staff, that's not really just low income, that's very low income as well. Those are parking lots that I just laid, left off. So now we're gonna have no parking and we're gonna double the density. And those are the parking lots that are gonna put that density on. There's two other parking lots I simply just really balk at, the theater parking lot. After the raising millions of dollars, we're gonna take the theater parking lot. And the parking lot, a couple of these parking lots, I believe, were built with federal funds, and I don't even think you can take them. And I put in a public request well over two weeks ago to find out about that. I just don't envision downtown Lompoc being a walking town where everybody's vibrant and no parking. I just don't see that for a town of forty thousand people. That's my concern, and I'm, you're gonna see this as we go through this, I'll be picking at this theme that they've consolidated, I say they, we have consolidated all the low income and the, you know, if you take those sites, it's a hundred of the three fifteen. Then there's ninety-nine, I think, out on Ocean, so there's where all the low income are, and then we'll spread all the rest out somewhere. Probably in places they won't build for low income. I just, I just don't, it doesn't match my vision of what downtown should be.
I understand the concern. I just, I wanna make sure we don't lose sight of the fact that we are not legislating development to go into places by doing this, by making these changes. We are simply creating the potential for developments that are still gonna come to the planning commission to be evaluated and for us to then decide, no, we cannot take that parking lot away, or no, we cannot allow this project to go forward. I don't know, I have a feeling like that we are taking these as, we're putting more weight on these things that I think that they actually have. We are, we are not creating new projects here. I don't know if I'm explaining myself the way I want to, but all we're doing here is saying, okay, downtown Lompoc, for example, has certain issues that prevent certain type of development from happen, happening. If we remove those restrictions, it doesn't mean that those developments will happen. We're simply saying, okay, if a private landowner wants to come in and create a, a project that meets those, meets those new requirements, they can come to the planning commission and submit their project to us. We're, I feel like we're just like, we are projecting too much into the future, projecting too much into reading the intentions of future developers as if those things have already happened. I don't know if you, does, do, am I making sense?
I follow what you're saying, I'd take issue with two of the statements and I'll turn over to, you, you, you go ahead.
But if you are, let's say you do approve to this, what is it, seventy-five percent, then you're incentivizing them to come in, so you will be seeing these. What if they're not coming in because it's?
Well, they can, they will come in if it makes sense.
But we're planning for the future as well, so that's what we have to look into.
They will come in financially and economically will make sense to them. If it, if it won't, they won't come on, they won't come.
Commissioners, I just wanted to add something if it's okay. A lot of these downtown lots are actually owned by the city. And so when you talk about someone building or developing on these lots, if the city ever reached a point where we thought it would be good for the community to produce a housing development on these parking lots, yes, we could do that, given, you know, what we're looking at tonight. But I think it's important to remember that there are a lot of design constraints that go into it. There's public input, public comment, and we as a city are, we are tasked with making sure that we don't wanna create no parking in downtown and a bunch of housing as well. So if these projects were coming forward, we would have to also look to identify solutions to address parking constraints, much like other downtowns have to do. And if that means through design or figure out, figuring out, are we gonna build a small parking structure out there? I think City of Santa Maria built another small parking structure at their city hall because they realized they needed more parking. So I, I think those are all things that, much like Commissioner Chiogni is saying, we are doing what is necessary per the state, per our housing element. But you do have to remember that we have local controls right now, assuming we have a certified housing element, to say, you know, this is what the city has to do, because the bulk of those lots are owned by the city. So I just wanna, I want you to keep that in mind. And the other thing, because a lot of people say, oh, well, the city could just sell those lots. We can't just sell those lots. There's the Surplus Land Act that has a whole bunch of requirements on it that doesn't allow us to just sell city-owned property. So I just wanna throw those out there.
Okay, I just wanna clarify my comment, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Bridge, and I don't disagree with the concerns that this element is, is, at least it looks like it places too much pressure within the city, within the city limits, negating our opportunity to expand beyond our limits. I, I get that point, I absolutely do, and I agree with that. I just wanna, I mean, we're making a lot of assumption though here that if we don't approve this plan, nothing's gonna happen, they're not gonna come for us. They're not gonna pull our funds and they're not gonna impose, what's that called?
Yeah, builder's relief.
But if you do approve it, then they're gonna come for us and gonna make us build the houses. Okay, so these two assumptions are contradictory to me. If no one's gonna do anything, no one's gonna do anything. If, if someone's gonna do something, they're gonna do something. So we can't say that in, if we, if we make one decision, they're gonna leave us alone, and if we make the opposite decision, they're going to bother us. I see a contradiction there. So if we assume that all these threats are empty, then I would, I would like to also assume that if we do approve it, they're not gonna come and make sure that we build the housing. I wanna be consistent in those, in that non-interventionist approach. But if we're saying, or, or we can, we can assume that they will take action against us if we don't approve it, and if we do approve it, then they will, they will intervene in both cases. I just, I don't, I don't get that if we do one thing, they leave us alone, but if we do the other thing, they won't. That's, that's the assumption that I, that I struggle with, so.
I, I have the assumption they're coming for us, but I don't believe they're gonna leave us alone. I personally feel like we've already been baited and switched in the RENA stuff. We were told over and over again, the RENA numbers didn't matter. Just get it in, we'll get through that, and then nobody's ever gonna enforce the RENA numbers. Now we're here being told we have to rezone, we have to meet these numbers, or they're coming for us. So I believe they're coming for us. What I don't think we should do is self-inflicted pain. This density increase is not in this inventory. It will make no impact one way or the other, so I don't understand why we're doing it.
I don't, I don't disagree with it. Again, mine was more of a general comment, so if there's consensus on this, I'm, I'm fine.
I don't know if there's consensus.
No, that's what I'm saying, if there's consensus on removing this point, I'm, I'm okay with it. I just wanna make sure that we have a general approach on this that, yes, it's true that the RENA numbers need to, need to match or need to be covered, but they need to be covered in terms of like the available zoning. No one's gonna come in and say, you didn't, you didn't build the twenty-three hundred houses we, we told you to build, hence you, I don't, I don't know. I don't even know what the consequence of that would be. Well, they probably give us more, more allocation in the next RENA. But then, but then it's gonna be the point where we're gonna say, well, if you wanna give us that many houses, then we need the Bailey Corridor. Right, so, I don't know, I mean, I guess we can ask Mr. Bright, Wright-Bushman, sorry, what happens if we don't meet the twenty-three, if we don't build the twenty-three thousand, twenty-three hundred houses that we've been allocating during this cycle?
City has no obligation to, if, if no, if no units were built, my understanding is that nothing would happen to the city.
Yeah, so, the next cycle, they might look at those numbers and say, you need to build more, you need to build less, but there's no.
Probably what would happen, I mean, in that scenario, and feel free to correct me, what the city's obligation is, is to accommodate the RENA numbers. We need to show, we've been given, this city's been given a number, which come up with people that are not here tonight, right? Came up with a number, this is, I mean, this is the housing need in your community. We then just need to show in this document that we can accommodate that, and they break it down by income group, right? So we just need to, and so there's extra require, if you wanna show that your site can accommodate low income versus above moderate income, you have to meet extra requirements. So anyway, we look at all the sites and we basically say, here's how we could accommodate this, these numbers that you gave us. If we don't have existing sites that can accommodate it, then we'll have to rezone a couple of sites, and that's all we have to do. And then, once we get that done, if no housing gets built, there's really no penalties except that I could imagine probably HCD coming around next cycle and being like, well, your plan didn't really work very well last time, so maybe let's tweak your plan for how we can try to get more housing. But there's no penalty if there's no housing built. I mean, would you, so I'll, I'll ask quickly.
Here's the penalty, I guarantee you, if you tell a developer he can put a hundred houses on a lot versus fifty houses on a lot, he's gonna go put a hundred houses on a lot.
Yeah, 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 no, that, that I understand, that I understand. What is extremely frustrating about all this is that the staff is putting in hundreds of hours, we're putting in whatever number of hours here for essentially a non-real and a completely moot point, which is accommodate a number that no one is, no one is going to ever hold you to build actually houses. So it's, it's essentially almost like a useless process, but it requires all these, all these works, and all this work and all these hours and all these meetings and all this. So I understand, this is very frustrating. But we have this number, we can't change it, right? I mean, the time to change, the time to discuss the number is during the cycle, now, now we're stuck with this number. And we need to show that we have enough density and zone and, you know, to, to meet this number. Right, so.
Comment.
Sorry.
So if the city doesn't intend to build housing anytime soon on those parking lots, and there's a bunch of obstacles if they, they one day decide to sell those lots, why are we including them in the sites?
I could answer that.
And, and that was my, I read through this third document twice, Brian, you know, like I just read, 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 and I, I feel that like from the perspective of recommendations of sites through the city, city lots are last, right? City lots aren't first, right? So as that study is completed, we're looking at property in the city that is viable property to use with the city lots coming dead last, right? Like when we gotta dial in, I'm just kinda concerned about that, and I'm, I'm kinda concerned like when something gets published and the number's there, right? Like if it says seventy-five percent, right? Somebody comes in, the document says I have this number, right? So I feel that the lower of the number should be lower, right? Nineteen years of being in Lompoc, we consistently say we wanna invest in Old Town, right? We can't even get business to Old Town, right? We're saying now we wanna invest in housing in Old Town. I live in Old Town. Right, I live in Old Town and no one's coming to Old Town. Right, so that, that just kinda concerns me that we kinda threw Old Town in this layer to say we're gonna build these multiple dwellings to bogey into a number. My other thing is, is from, from the aggregate number that we've gotten for the number of houses that we need to meet for the requirement to the state, was the census number, this previous census number taken into consideration, right? If we had a decrease in population, which we did, right, so we had a decrease in population in Lompoc, that number should be decreasing. Right, so was the census number?
So I, you had a lot of really good comments, but the one statement I wanted to make with regards to the downtown parking lots, and I'm sorry, you lost my train of thought because you brought up census and that was, that's one of my, one of my deals, and I was thinking that our consultant could speak to what drives our RENA number, and I don't know how much is census and potential future growth, but I think one of the reasons the RENAs were so high this go-round was really our governor's push and, you know, this housing crisis declaration and his massive goal for California producing a crazy amount of housing. So I think that's partly what drove those RENA numbers, not so much what our potential growth is for Lompoc or what our lacks in growth has been over the years. I don't think they really looked at that. But it'll come back to me on the parking lots, I apologize.
And that's my biggest concern, right, is like plastered all over the news, we keep seeing stories, Morabays having issues, Pismo Beaches having issues, right? Parking, 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 parking. We take parking away, like we ain't getting it back. And it's not like the city, from a city budgetary standpoint, we can't go, just go build the frills and frazzles of a three-story parking garage downtown, right? There's, we don't have the revenue to provide that. But the, like the last question before I just get off, like, what's like kinda concerning to me too, like even in the document as we talk about that, it's like, there's no real attachment to really kinda quantify the salary range for low income, like severe income, right? Throughout this entire document, right, as a reference, right, what's the threshold for medium, moderate, is it less than thirty-five?
Yeah, I could tell you what those are. The reason they're not incorporated into the document, I mean, likely is this is a, what, five-year, eight-year document, Brian? And those, those income levels are updated annually. So I, I mean, I could tell you roughly what they are, or I can tell you like spot-on because I.
I think we owe it to the community, right, because.
Yeah, I think it's important. Yeah, I think it's important, I agree.
See a trend of, at least this plan's been out for X number of years, right? We saw the trend of the economy, these were the salaries in these current fiscal years, right? And that's what's based these numbers to qualify into this bracket. We owe that as transparency to the community to understand, hey, I make this much money, but I would fall into this.
I always love to, uh, say what the income limits are because I think people have a misconception of what woe income is. So for a low-income household of four in Lompoc, 118,500. For a moderate-income household in Lompoc of four, it's 128,750 dollars. So I, I always am, um, I, I think that's a good number to have in your head because I think a lot of us know people who qualify for those household sizes and they're employed and they have families and they are trying to, um, get into housing. So, uh, I, I appreciate you asking that question.
Commissioner Bridge, if I could just real quickly regarding the parking lots in downtown, because I know Commissioner Bridge has come up and asked me about the same thing. I, I put some boards out here, uh, for the public and for the commission to see. That middle board is called the Vision 2020. That board right there, uh, shows most of the downtown being infill development. Now, I don't want to get into the economics or why that didn't happen over 20 years, but it didn't. The 2020 vision did not happen. Now, to the right, that board, I asked the developer if I could share that this evening, and he said it's fine. That's a new downtown project on parking lots. Now, those parking lots are not owned by the city of Lompoc, but those are parking lots that he owns and they will go away if he comes in with this proposal. That's a proposal for, I want to say it's around 25 units, um, down the street from Fire Station One. It's a great infill site. In short, the vision, um, of downtown has been to do infill development. We have that clear in some of our management plans, redevelopment plans. And even though, uh, they are, some of them, a lot of them are owned by the city, uh, the city could sell them one day and build on them and it's zoned appropriately. So the task, as I mentioned in my previous comments, the task is to look at land, what is its zone? What is the density? And apply that density to that either vacant lot or partially vacant lot, whether it's city-owned or not. So that's the reason why you're seeing those downtown lots for a variety of reasons. So I just wanted to share that information.
I wanted to add one more thing. I know we talk about our downtown and it is doing so much better than previous years occupancy-wise. We're seeing some businesses that are doing well there and, and are frequented by a lot of people. And I just wanted to paint that picture of just how more lucrative those downtown businesses could be if we had a captured audience of housing, people that were housed there. And we talk about increasing and improving the walkability of Lompoc. And having those people be able to partake and, and go, I think of it as go walk over to South Side, get a coffee, walk their kids over to the music area, hopefully go see a show in the theater soon. So all of those things, you have a captured audience there of, of retailers, people ready to shop. And, and that's good for the city and it's good for our small businesses. So I just wanted to add that. Don't, don't shut it down. We will make sure parking happens in Lompoc. We aren't going, that is not the city that, that we want. We want to make sure we have parking and we're going to figure out a way to do it. But, um, just, this is part of that vision that I wished would have happened by 2020. But we are where we are now and we're, we're still working on things.
And where is the project located on the right? You said down the street from Fire Station One, so is that in between, um?
I believe that's the.
First American and.
Well, right, right now, they only, they submitted a preliminary application and went to a meeting for a discussion. But now the developer needs to actually submit, um, his permit. He hasn't done that yet, but I asked him, are you still interested? Yes, very interested. So yeah, just right around the corner, um, from Fire Station One on, that's on East OSHA. I think it's the.
That's.
200 block.
That's right, be, that's between where, yeah, in between H and G, that middle parking?
Cross from the Toyota dealership.
Cross from the Toyota dealership, it's.
But the Toyota dealership is farther down.
Toro Loco.
So Toro Loco? Yeah, so the, so that's not a cross from Toyota then, that's.
Toro Loco is sort of a cross from.
We, we could pull the, the site up on the screen if you'd like to.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can grab that. So is that underground parking then, Brian? Uh, no, that's not underground parking. Well, where are they parking? I, I don't have the site plan in front of me, but, um, we can certainly bring that at a later date. Is that at a density of 44 or a density of 75? I, I don't have the density. I want to say it's, I want to say it's between 25 and 35, but he hasn't submitted an application yet. But that's just kind of a first start that he's made. Give me a second. I'd make a motion that, uh, we leave the density where it is. It's not going to impact our ability to meet the arena numbers. And, uh, that would be my recommendation when we forward this.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Who's, who's taking, who's, yeah, that's what I'm saying, we need to, who's saying, who's keeping tabs of all these motions though? Because we need to.
We're taking, keeping tabs, we're keeping tabs.
Great, great. Yeah, because in the end I want to do the final motion.
May I make a comment just to add additional information to an answer I gave earlier?
Sure.
Real quick. You had asked what happens if we don't develop the sites. If we keep putting sites, if the city puts, uh, sites in its housing element for multiple cycles, there's eight-year cycles, and they keep not getting developed and they keep remaining vacant, then eventually, um, I believe it's after two cycles, consultant can correct me if I'm wrong. If the site remains vacant and it's been there for two cycles and somebody proposes, uh, to come in and put in a 20% affordable project, then the, the city loses a lot of discretion about whether or not to approve that project. In other words, if you keep putting sites in your housing element and they keep not getting developed, then the city, um, or the state grabs a little bit of, of your discretion away if somebody comes in with an affordable project. So that, that's what, so that's a, a, a reason to consider, we really do need to put in sites that, you know, we don't want to keep putting cycles in.
Right, this is good information.
Sites in cycle over cycle that, um, that can't be developed.
Okay.
Just so you know. The other thing to, uh, I want you to know just for the sake of the parking discussion, is there are recent, um, a law that went into effect this year limits the ability of cities, um, to require any kind of minimum parking down, uh, within a half mile of public transit. I believe there is one, there is public transit downtown. So going forward, the city will have limited ability to require parking minimums. I presume that's with, in the downtown area? In the downtown area, to the extent that that influences your considerations, I just wanted to put that forward.
Okay, thank you. No, it's.
I'm not correcting anyone, I'm providing additional information for a question.
Okay, 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 thank you.
My next one is two dash 124. Two dash 124. And it, it's really a question to you, Brian.
Yeah.
The number 81, is that, is that a change in density zoning or what? It's at the bottom of that, of the H Street overlay. I'm sure it's right. Is that 925 North F Street? Site number 81? No, two 124.
Oh.
Sorry.
The H Street overlay base district density is listed as 81 approved.
Yeah, I'm just trying to internalize, what are you telling me there? You see, that's what we're. Could, could you repeat the, the number of the page?
Two dash 124.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Two dash 124.
I can maybe clarify that for you, Commissioner.
Sure.
So this looks at an existing project in Lompoc, the name of it is Home Base on G.
Sorry, I have a great deal of difficulty.
No worries. So the pro, that's an existing project, Home Base on G. So we looked at existing recent projects in the city and what their, their density outcome was. So I believe that's an affordable project, so they probably got some sort of density bonuses in the past.
Ah.
So.
Okay.
This is just looking at, um, site capacity, um, analysis.
Is that the specific, now that I'm there, um, is that the mixed use, uh, for the Cypress Court? Is that the one you're referring to? Oh, Home Base on, okay. I'm not familiar with that project just because, okay. So Christie Alakon can.
If you have specific questions about that project, I am.
No, I just wanted to understand that number, he, he explained it fine.
Great. Yes. It's a hundred percent low income.
A lot of reading for me to do.
I know. Me too.
Okay, so, uh, Appendix C, C1.
C1, easy, that's easy. It's right after the tab.
Yeah, so I, I, I'll just make a comment. I, that's part of my concern, it's the same concern about parking. And here it, it just says basically, hey, they're all underutilized and, um, I just don't agree with that, so. And then my last real one is of a site survey, I'm not exactly sure where that is, but I'd like, uh, I'd like to recommend that, uh, Site 40 and 36 be, uh, removed.
40 and 36?
Yes.
All right, so that will be in Appendix D, right? That's the, uh, we have all the sites with pictures.
No.
On page 142 dash 145.
Two dash.
145.
145.
That's the map and the actual addresses are previous to that.
Two dash 145.
Well, it actually will be before that, it'll be, they're numbered in that table though, so.
Are you thinking of two dash 137?
No, I think what I'm really thinking of is two, yeah.
Two dash 145 is the, is the map, okay.
Two 138 has 40.
Two 137.
And I think 36 is on that one also.
Uh, Site 40 would be, uh.
204, 208, 216, West Ocean. And Site 36 is 122, 136 North H.
Okay, so they're both on the same page.
And one is the parking lot across the street from China King or whatever that, uh, it's the place where the, the swap meet is held. Okay? And one is the theater par, parking lot.
Oh, okay. So 36, yeah, 36 here I see is like.
If we could pull those up on the screen, it's very difficult, uh, just if you say this site or that site because.
Sure, sure.
Outdoor market.
Yeah. What's next to the chamber? That's in front of the chamber and that's, uh, Site 40 in your inventory? Forty is this, well, they're showing right there.
Forty is.
Next to the chamber. Yeah.
Oh, okay, so then. Oh, south, but this is South I, because am I looking at the right map?
Forty is.
Oh, I'm looking at the map with the old numbers, that's why.
Don't look at the map. You should have an underlying strikeout document, so. That's 40.
Yep, that's 40.
No, I think he has it, but he looked. So are you on page two dash 138 and it shows the red and the blue text?
Yeah.
Okay. So one of the sites that Commissioner Bridge is talking about this site, yes, it is the community market as Ms. Alakon stated, but it's also an infill site, so it could accommodate housing one day. Of course, as I mentioned, Old Town would require a percentage of that to be commercial use. So, um, we're not saying that there's a proposal here, we're not saying that, you know, the timing of the building, we're just saying that it's OTC and it could, the city could sell those lots and you could see a project there, which would be very beneficial for the downtown area. And the community market probably would be relocated. So, um, we would highly encourage you to keep those lights, lots, but obviously your recommendation to the council is what's before tonight. You want to show the other lot too while we're? Yeah. The other one is, uh.
While Brian's looking for that, can I ask a quick question? If we took those lots out of the site inventory, if I'm understanding, that's kind of what you're thinking, okay. Does that create a need to rezone something else?
Ryan, would you address that?
Thanks.
Because I think that's what our, we were trying to avoid more rezoning. So I, I get a little concerned with removing anything, so I do want to throw that out there, so if you could clarify for me.
Yeah, there's about 55 units on both of those sites, so we would need to find additional sites to make that up. Potentially finding sites to rezone. There are some additional sites that we could include, but I'm not sure if they would make up that difference or not.
What's the zoning of the Dollar General lot? Um, I, I don't know, maybe we come back to that, could we finish these two sites? Well, he's, he's suggesting that, and Christie is suggesting that if we want to remove these, then in good faith, we should suggest an alternative. No, I understand, we could pull that up, let's just finish this one, because this is the theater one, I think it's important for us to finish this. So this is Site 36. So I did reach out to the theater and said, these, are these two lots, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I mean, I have slightly differing opinion about these two sites. I mean, this one, like, okay, we're, I, I, I get it, like, we, there's like a, a project going to rev, to revitalize and rebuild this theater that's almost to the end zone, and now we're taking away the parking lot. It's, it seems, seems a little harsh.
That's why I reached out to the theater, because I wanted to ask. He said that he definitely, they definitely would need one for the parking, for the theater. But he did say that he would not rule it out for the other one, which is on the corner, it was up on the screen, but it's not anymore. So the corner, uh, the one on Walnut and H, he would not rule it out. If someone came in, maybe they did a ground lease, they still had parking, but they went up.
You mean like, which one, the, the one on top of it?
She's pointing right there.
And so is now the site, site, uh, is this Site 40 or Site 36?
36.
36.
It's 36, but it has both sites.
So 36 includes both sites, right?
22 and 136 North H is Site 36.
So, yeah, so he's saying, he's saying they would, so he said he would need one of the two.
Yeah, he would.
And I would think, I would think that the one closes to them.
Right.
Because the theater would be the one he wants, so.
If we remove that, we would lose, you know, units there as well. I don't know if it's 55 because it would only be half of that.
It says 26 units, but I'm guessing 26 is for both, right? So it's going to be something between.
Yeah.
15 maybe.
Yeah.
That we lose if we still keep the, the, the north portion in the, in the.
So I understand that. And then the site, the Dollar General, once we're done, we can go to that one. It's just, we're hopping around a lot, I want to make sure we just kind of do one thing at a time and then we'll move to Commissioner Bridge's Dollar General site, which is in your packet. Just let me know when you want to go to that site.
Camry was going to look up what that was actually zoned.
Nick, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't think I can reopen the public comment, but.
You can, you can reopen it if you'd like.
It's a contaminated site, I don't know.
Commissioner Chiana, you're welcome to reopen the public comment if you'd like to.
All right, so let's reopen public comment for a second, so.
When I was on the Board of LA CDC, we attempted to get a, a clean site. That site on Walnut is a contaminated site. Walnut, the one corner across from the old Santa Barbara Bank and Trust. So that's a constraint, that's a significant constraint to, to development. We were never allowed to provide any housing on that.
You're talking about the north portion of that, of that parking lot?
Yes, the second lot of the, of the city theater. And then I think it would help if they, if they can give you a, a geomap of what parcels are exempt from parking under the affordability law that has passed, because you're making these decisions and, and you don't have that material information of what parcels fall under the exemption of parking under the new law that doesn't require parking if you have affordable units.
Yeah, we, we could do, it's, it's like Brian Wright-Bushman said, it's one, within a half mile of our transit center, which is on Cypress and I. So it, it's a very large area. Many, many parcels, but we can certainly pull up a map for you. That, that's not really tonight what we're considering, since that's already a law, but it is a good. That that's not really tonight what we're considering, since that's already a law, but it is a good point.
Okay, we have another public comment.
Susan Gallagher, I'm just confused at the information that you guys have and what they have seem to not match up and to know what's really going on to be able to make a decision to move forward. That's the impression I'm getting from this.
I don't think you are totally wrong.
Well, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, no.
So, just to repeat what I heard, to make sure I internalized it. The transit center, which is on Cypress, between I and J, anything within some radius around that will be exempt from having to have parking.
Yeah, there's a lot of requirements, but yes, within a half mile, but there are a lot of requirements.
And those are the spots we we are saying we will put housing.
Well, yeah, obviously, yeah, within a half mile, there's a lot, there's sites that are within that radius.
Parking is a legitimate concern, then, because if they're exempt from it, again, we can pretend that nothing maybe will get built, but if we set the rules, you know, if we say they can put a five thousand square foot house on a lot, they they don't have to come here and ask me permission anymore. So if we say you can build on this lot, they're going to come build.
I have a question. We're not rezoning the parking lots, right, Brian?
Correct.
So as of right now, projects can come in if if the city was selling those parking lots and all of that, and build housing on those parking lots. We are solely counting those parking lots as currently zoned as part of this inventory to meet the RENA numbers. There, you're not making any changes to anything by counting what could happen on those lots. It's already zoned to do this. But if you do remove those lots from your site inventory, you will have to find other sites to rezone. So I just want to make sure that's really clear. We have had these zoned this way for the last eight years, I guess, and and maybe longer, and nothing has occurred. So I just want to make sure we're understanding what we're doing for a housing element requirement.
Yes, but we've also just been told, again, information that we did not have, or at least I didn't know, you may you may be new, I didn't know, that if we put these things in an inventory and if we put it for two consecutive cycles and if we don't build on them, then the state can come in and basically force a a a low-income residential development on those without us having any any control of it. So I would be very careful about what we put in that site inventory, that we don't open ourselves up to something like that happening to that particular site. So if we want to protect a site, because there's a legitimate reason for protecting it, and I think in this case, the parking lot of theater, it's a pretty legitimate reason, we need to be strategic about it. We can't just say, yeah, it's available, so let's put it in. So I would rather rezone another site, right, to protect that site from being taken over. Again, I'm I'm basing this this comment on what Mr. Wright-Bushman just just disclosed, that there is, there is a consequence. I see, I thought wrongly that there were, there were going to be no consequences if...
That's new, right, Brian?
I was wrong.
So this has been in the housing element, and all the new laws are summarized in the housing element, so, but Brian can add a little more to that. But that was last month and actually six months ago, we summarized everything.
It's an ever-changing environment, and that makes it even more confusing, but that's, I guess, that's that's what it is. I I don't want that site to be taken over just because we, you know, we didn't think about removing it from the inventory, so.
For clarity, the ones that are owned by the city, I think when we talk about the state taking over, it's not the state comes in and says, city, you don't own that lot anymore, we're going to build housing there, but a lot of their, a lot of our local control on what can occur there goes away.
Yeah, I I've exaggerated, but there isn't, the point is like, it's not completely free.
But what I want to add is that we, because we own it, we maintain that local control. Now, let's just say the city said, hey, city council, we want to sell this lot, or we want to give this lot to somebody. Ultimately, our city council, everything has to go to them, so I just want to make sure it doesn't seem like all of the control goes away. Things do have to go to council, they have to be approved by council, so at that time, an analysis would be done where we say we're, we would be getting rid of X amount of parking spaces and we only have this amount, and so I just want to make sure it's not, there's not just a one stop.
To be very, very much completely clarified by 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 our attorney, because again, now my assumption is that there are there are consequences in putting lots in in an inventory and not building on them, whereas prior to tonight, I thought there weren't. So what are these consequences?
I'm looking for the citation right now. When I find it, I'll I'll give you the precise citation and and language.
Do we have a list of the sites that have been used in the previous cycles?
Yes, if you go to the inventory, it'll say, has it been used in the fifth cycle? It says yes or no. It's to the far right, it's the last column.
Which a majority have.
We highlighted that last month as well regarding those recycled sites and how if someone came in with a project on those.
So 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 this site was used in the fifth, so this would be the second time we put it, consecutive time, we put it in a in a in an inventory. So next time, whatever these consequences are, would be triggered. So I'd be very careful. I, again, I'd rather take a couple of sites off and rezone a couple more sites. I I don't know if that's...
Well, we don't really know if they have to be rezoned. I asked what that area was.
No, but I mean, like, to to replace them, what the consultants were saying, if we remove those, we lose numbers, so we would have to bring in a couple alternative sites that would need to be rezoned.
That may need to be rezoned.
May, may. And I would rather do that, rather than losing sites that we want to preserve.
Has the commission had time to look at those alternative alternate sites that Commissioner Bridge suggested in Attachment eleven? Have you guys had a chance to look at that? Because it sounds like we're going to look at those and other sites.
I haven't not had a chance to look at it, those in detail, but I guess we can.
The parking lot, it seems like the natural one is Dollar General to me.
So we'll go ahead and pull up the Dollar General. It's just west of the Dick DeWee Center. It's that shopping center.
That's the one west, all the way west, right?
Yeah, so...
That big hospital or medical, a big empty lot next to it.
Yeah, and the empty lot, I think, is already in the inventory, I think, I don't know.
Is the empty lot right there next to it already in the inventory?
One in front of the clinic. Is that is that in the inventory?
Commissioner Bridge was, if you look at the attachment, you'll see he highlighted a very large area in red. Staff agrees with Commissioner Bridge. The area that has the little pointer there that says PCD, that's right in front of our brand-new CHC. That whole property, CHC, and the vacant property in front of it, that was zoned, medium-density residential, and they rezoned it about four years ago. Council approved it. That enabled the CHC clinic to be built, but the front part is vacant. It's still zoned PCD. So that could be a good alternate site if you wanted to rezone that to residential. I wouldn't recommend the the parking lots, but you could look at the parking lots as well.
I was, I've always, every time I drive through that thing, that where the clinic is on the back, I always think, why is that part in front of it vacant? And I think that would be, that would definitely be a much better, in my opinion. And that's pretty, I mean, you can, you can build a pretty, a pretty big number there, I think.
And how many units would that fit?
We could do a calculation. We just don't have that right at the minute, but we could do it during the meeting. It wouldn't be hard.
Okay, so...
Just a comment to the commission. I was trying to count, it looks like forty-two of the eighty-six sites we have on there have been used in the fifth cycle.
Yeah.
I just did that number I was counting. So it's actually forty-three, so forty-three have been used. Yeah, so then there's forty, forty-one are new.
And then how many of those forty-two are already, are underutilized and have something on there already? What's the likelihood that someone's going to come build on it?
Well, you're kind of...
Well, I think, I'll add to that. I think that's why we're looking at some policy changes that would further incentivize those underutilized sites, and that is, is it the PD, PCD? What is that, Brian? The overlay? PD overlay, which some of the setback constraints that makes it financially and feasible for developers, because they can only get so many units on those small sites, would perhaps with that overlay be able to now build out further and fit more to make it financially feasible. So that's, that's the hope with the underutilized sites, and that's why we did the overlay that way.
I'm trying to keep this, I guess, reasonable in scope. I'm not advocating a complete overhaul of the list, but I understand, Commissioner Bridge, you have concerns with a couple of those, that you wanted, that you brought up. So I'll be more than willing to strike those two out and task staff on finding a couple of alternative sites to rezone. I think this one is a great candidate. I'm sure if we start looking at it, there are others that are similar. Honestly, that thing looks big enough. How many housings are we losing with those two sites? Fifty-five.
And I'll have a number for you in just a second.
If that thing was our three, I bet you could fit fifty-five housing, just right there. I don't know. I mean, the way it looks to me, but...
You may have solved that equation that quickly.
I don't know. Likely not, but what I'm saying is that if the issue here is a couple of sites, let's just do that and and move forward and get this thing going.
Well, I don't know what the consensus of the commission is. I I'm definitely hard over on the theater. Christie's made a very good point that it's partially commercial. I probably had not internalized that fully on the other site. I still would like them both out, but I'm I'm willing to compromise.
Fifty-five out, we can, again, I think...
Okay, well, I'll make the motion.
I think it's a reasonable goal.
I make the motion that we add the recommendation that those two sites be removed. That's thirty-six and forty, I believe, on the new list. It's the theater parking lot and the one hundred block of Ocean parking lot, and look at replacing that with, how do I describe that? The PCD overlay next to the Dollar General parking lot.
I have the address on that. It's twelve twenty.
Twelve twenty, West Ocean.
West Ocean, thank you.
Twelve twenty, West Ocean.
Okay. Can you have a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passes for zero.
I'm done.
What else?
On the HCD comment...
Thank you, Commissioner Bridge.
A two eleven, it says, finally, as noted in the housing element, oh, on page thir, oh, it's Attachment six, page three. Yes. The HCD comment list. No, it's, or, yeah, it's the one behind. Yes, this one. A two eleven. Oh, so it's on Attachment six? It's going to be in your, in your other packet, Commissioner Bridge, behind your agenda.
It's on the staff report.
Staff report.
Which is torn apart, just like mine, yeah.
So it says, A two eleven, finally, as noted in the... Commissioner Bridge, don't don't fret. We'll put it up on the big screen for you. For me also.
So this is the the matrix that the consultant put together in response to the HCD comment letter, Attachment six.
My question, well, I'll let you pull it up first. It's probably about fifty or sixty pages down. Or, yeah, control, the city will include. I had to tap it with all these attachments they included. Yeah, I couldn't.
Commissioner Braxton has a comment.
So, Brian?
Yeah.
You know, I read this, read it, and read it, and read it, and I know you know me, that I'm a policy guy, procedure, process improvement thing, that's what I do every day. My concern is, is if I read this three times, right, and I left on the third time still feeling confused, as I did the first time, I just, I feel like there's substance we're missing in the document. Like, I know the HCD was, this is what went to the state, right? State review, they reevaluated, they kind of came back their comments, right? I feel as it goes back again, it's going to be this constant kind of going back and forth.
We hope not, but we might get one more round of comments.
I I just think that there's, as the council reads this, right, there needs to be even another layer of explanation to them, because there is, it's like you could drive a bus through this, right? Potato, potato, tomato, tomato, right, your interpretation, my interpretation. I just think that there's some some disconnect in understanding where I still don't have the warm fuzzy in it, you know what I mean? There's things, I I'm okay with it, but to give a recommendation that we push this up to city council to review, I think it needs kind of another, see what we get back from the state, right? Have we gotten, these were the comments, the response, right, the ECD?
Right. Attachment six are their comments. I I will say this, Commissioner Braxton, if you need more, we really need to get really clear input on what additional layer you need, because it is a complex document, and there is a lot of different layers, but if there's something that we need to change, we really need to get clear direction, because we'll keep coming back, meeting after meeting after meeting, and so we need to know what layer you need.
I think the biggest layer we need, and it was kind of confirmed to me today, right, in this meeting of reviewing all this document, is the legality. Right, we really aren't highlighting legality, right? Yeah, there's always going to be a what-if, but tonight confirmed my suspicion in here that there's some legality things that we don't know what we don't know, right? And we don't what we don't know, but we kind of know tonight, but that has to also be related to the city council, right? So they make the educated decision, right? So if we were in here tonight, and I don't, I'm not going to speak on my fellow commissioners, like, there was a lot that I wish I knew coming into this meeting, right, that was talked about in this meeting, right? It wasn't in the document. It was just happened that we came to get to those clarifications by talking through it.
Right. I will say this, that's a very good point. We summarized all the changes to housing laws in this document, which starts on on page two dash one. If there's any, we could spend an hour or two, if you want, summarizing and going over these new housing laws, but that's why we hired a consultant. The consultant's job was to look at what RENA is, what HCD is requiring, look at the new housing laws, and create a housing plan. So, I mean, we, it would probably bore people if we came back and went over all these new housing laws. So, I mean, we, I, it would probably bore people if we came back and went over all these new housing laws, and they are difficult. So, but I think we actually could get through those things tonight, but we just need to know what laws you would wanna talk about and what, uh, extra layer, because it, well, keep coming back and back, because it is a complex issue. And so, we wanna be efficient with our time. And I know that there's certain sites that we believe, hey, it will never be built on, but that's not what we're charged to do. We're charged to look at the land we have that's available and what it's zoned, but not saying that it's, a builder's gonna come in tomorrow, because nobody has a crystal ball of when developers are gonna come in to build.
No, and I know this is like, you all have known me for a long time, right? We do this, this goes to the state, it's our checkbox, right? We all know that, right? We have to do this, we have to go through this exercise to make sure that we check the box, get the rubber stamp, right? And, and we know it's just that exercise we have to go through, you know? Yeah, it's gonna go down there. We're, we're looking at, like now, we're, we're really, my, my heart's telling me, we're not gonna build anything for a while, right? Just because of the current market we're in, right? Interest rates are through the roof, right? You're gonna get somebody to come in and wanna build here, right? The likelihood of someone getting a mortgage in it, or a, a loan and it being at this percentage, some people are gonna kinda shine away from that right now, um, just because of the way the economy is and the way the market is. So I know that we gotta do this. I'm just saying that before this goes to council, you know, we're an advisory outlet to each of our council person. I think we just gotta make sure that they're equipped and understand all of the things, um, in here about the complexity before they make their educated decision to say yes.
I just wanna mention, it, kind of in defense of the document, or, or maybe just for clarity, just so you don't think we're hiding the ball here. The two laws that I've spoken tonight are both discussed in the introduction under changes to state law, um, on page two-dash-one and two-dash-eight. Just, I'm not saying that I expect you, I, I probably more than anyone in this room understand the massive complexity of housing law these days. It's changed, there were fifty-six bills that were just passed two weeks ago regarding housing laws that I'm trying to process right now. And that was just this year, and that happens like every year. So trust me, I understand that it's complicated. But I just want you to know that there was a real effort to describe those in here, and both of the laws I have mentioned that are in here, just so you know.
I appreciate the effort. I think what, what we feel we lack as, as, you know, being here on the commission is a true understanding of the consequences. What happens if this happens, or if it, if this doesn't happen? What, again, I, I came in with a certain, with a set of assumption that was proved wrong. My assumption was, yeah, you know, we just need to look at, make sure the number is zoned in. If we build, we build, if we don't build, we don't build, there's no consequence. Well, now I learned there is, there are some potential consequences. What if we don't, we don't present a, uh, approved certified housing element to the state in time? Well, we understand there are consequences that look, at least, you know, they've been painted as terrible, like with old fundings and, uh, um, what is the other thing?
Builders remedy.
Yeah, builders remedy, I, I can't commit that to memory. Builders remedy and all that, that stuff. But then I hear people saying, well, that's never happened really in, in, in history, or whatever. Some people have said, no, they're not gonna do that. Nobody's ever done that. Nobody's ever gonna pull. Someone said, no, they're not gonna pull. Show me examples that they're gonna pull the funds. Well, okay, is, is this a real concern? Is this really gonna happen or not? I mean, we need to know what we're up against here.
I can speak to the builders remedy aspect, just 'cause that's a legal issue, just so you know. So first of all, the city is already subject to the builders remedy. The day that the deadline passed, the city became, the city became out of compliance. What was that deadline? February fifteenth, the city has been out of compliance with housing element law since February fifteenth. Starting that day, anybody could come into the city and propose a project, basically on...
February fifteenth of this year?
Yes.
Okay.
So starting that day, anybody could come into the city and propose a project that was inconsistent with the city zoning code and inconsistent with the city's general plan, land use element. As long as it, and as long as it included twenty percent affordability, the city basically could not deny it. I'm, I'm personally working, uh, on multiple lawsuits against multiple cities, um, south of here that, uh, are centered on the builders remedy. I know of several cities that have builders remedy projects that have been proposed. I don't know of any in this specific geographic area. Uh, most of those are down in the LA area, but I can just tell you that it's a real thing and it's happening. And then I can't speak to the, to the issue of funding, but maybe you have, or whatever you're gonna ask.
Yeah, yeah, so just to speak to that a little bit. Uh, we have clients who actually have had funding held back. Uh, we even had a client, um, a, a large county that desperately needed the money to go towards, um, uh, it, it was for homeless prevention, uh, and, and actually it was held back because HCD was still taking an extra review. So I actually had to, um, work with HCD directly and have them expedite their review just so that we could maintain this funding that the county needed desperately. I will also say that we are working with, um, uh, another city here in the county, and they just received a builders remedy application. They controlled the character of their city, um, pretty heavily, and, um, they, they received that application. And, uh, it's, it's not going to go through because, uh, the applicant actually didn't have his environmental documentation done, but as soon as it's done, he's gonna put that application back in. And that's here within the county.
And this city also then, I'm guessing, is, is out of compliance right now, otherwise?
Yes, they are currently out of compliance as well.
What other cities are out of compliance?
And when we apply for these grants and programs, we have to tell them whether we have an adopted certified housing element. And so that is very, very crucial, um, to be able to say yes or say no.
But this can also happen to the sites that are on here that have been passed to, that have been on the list for two cycles?
I'll, 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 I'll read you the specific law, so if we have a non-vacant...
Please paraphrase.
Yeah, 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 I'm gonna skip the parts that aren't relevant. So if you have a non-vacant site that was identified in a prior housing element, okay? So from last cycle. Or, so that's for a non-vacant site, something that has development on it. Or you have a vacant site that has been included in two or more consecutive planning cycles. So vacant site that was included in two or more.
Two or more?
Two or more.
Not more than two? Two or more?
Two or more.
Or vacant.
So that was vacant, vacant two or more, non-vacant just one. And there were, um, no developments approved on the site. Then HCD will not consider that site adequate to accommodate, basically to fulfill your requirements, not for any housing, but just for lower income housing. Unless it is, uh, zoned at a speci-, to accommodate a specific density. I believe in Lompoc, that is either twenty dwelling units to the acre or thirty dwelling units a acre. I'm not sure which it is. Is it twenty, exactly? Twenty? And, uh, the city has to allow development, it's called buy right, if the person, or the developer proposes at least twenty percent of the units.
So basically it becomes a builder remedy site?
Uh, ki- ki- Yeah.
Oh, sure.
And this is only if you want to include the site. You don't have to include the site, but go ahead.
So with, with builders remedy, um, your local control, your zoning code and your general plan, they can go against that, right? With, uh, a site that, um, has been used, like if it was used in the fourth cycle and the fifth cycle and it's vacant, they have to meet the objective, um, criteria of your zoning code and your general plan. Anything discretionary then is harder to enforce, but they are still meeting your general plan and your zoning.
So as, as long as they come in with the, with the right density and the right, um...
Setbacks, et cetera.
And, and they have twenty percent affordable unit, we cannot deny that development from going in.
You cannot deny it based on a subjective criteria, like, uh, compatibility with the neighbor next door that's not well-defined.
You couldn't, you couldn't require a CUP and also, or, or some kind of discretionary permit. And also, they wouldn't be required to comply with SEQA. Sorry, keep going.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be required to comply with SEQA?
Correct, 'cause it would be a ministerial approval.
'Cause it, it, 'cause it meets the zoning code and the, and the general plan.
Is that retroactive?
Is it retroactive to what?
Well, we've been through, we're on our fifth cycle, right?
Uh, this bill was passed, I believe in two thousand seventeen. I think it became effective in two thousand eighteen, so it became effective during the previous cycle.
Does that mean if we were in...
It would probably would...
Or I could go do that now?
I think that it, I don't, I have not looked into that specific question. If I had to guess, I would guess that it applies starting the next time that, that somebody adopts, uh, a, a housing element. So it would, so this would be the first housing el-, element of Lompoc that it would apply to. But I just wanna reiterate a point, there is a massive difference between the builders remedy and this. This is just saying, if somebody comes in and they meet all of your standards, and they propose twenty percent affordable, you can't like impose some kind of discretionary and say like, yeah, you did it, but we don't like this project. That's totally different than builders remedy.
We put it, we put it in the, in the list. That's the thing, that right? We put it in the list of, of developable sites.
Right.
Someone's coming in, wants to develop. We cannot say, no.
I mean, honestly...
You can't develop anymore, we changed our mind.
Honestly, it makes sense. Like, if the state's just saying, like, if you're saying that, like, this can be developed, then let it be developed.
So that's why, we want to protect a site, and we wanna be able to say, you know, no, you can't develop that site. We need to be careful of what we put in that list, so...
But if you, but the builders remedy is different, 'cause the builders remedy, people can come in, and even if, and even if they don't meet any of your objectives, and it's not even a zone, they can still do it.
As long as they put twenty percent affordable housing, they can do anything they want, anywhere, on any, on any part.
This is just like, come on already, let's get someone to develop this site.
Got it. Okay. Uh, thank you, that clarifies it massively. Okay, so if you wanna...
Okay, so if everyone wants to take a look at A two-eleven, that's HCD's comment. My question is, where's the, in which resolution is it, adopting resolution?
I can speak to that. The resolution is the resolution when the housing element is actually adopted. So tonight, we're making a recommendation whether or not to adopt it. So those findings will be made by the city council, but they don't need to be made by the planning commission, so they weren't included in the planning commission.
But you give us two resolutions to choose to adopt, so which is it?
So the resolutions that you...
Adopting. That adopting, meaning like the, the resolution that says adopt?
Correct. So tonight, tonight you will adopt a resolution, but that resolution will not adopt anything. It will just make a res-, it'll just make a recommendation. But when city council adopts a resolution, it will actually be adopting the housing element. So when a housing element is adopted, you have to make specific findings, but you're not adopting, or if you, even if you recommend it, you're not adopting it tonight. So we didn't include the findings in the, this resolution, but it will be included in the city council resolution, 'cause they're the ones that actually adopt it. Sorry, that's, that's not more clear.
So just for me to say what I heard, you're accepting this comment, I guess you have no choice but to accept the comment, and then you're saying, not today, but when the city council tells us to go forward, adopts a resolution to go forward, there will be words in there that address this?
That's exactly right.
And the reason we don't have those words now is 'cause we don't know what we're gonna say?
We just didn't need them in the resolution, so we didn't include it. We could discuss what some of the thoughts are on that, if, if you're concerned about it. But I don't, we haven't full, I don't think it's been fully formulated yet. Like, I don't have the exact thing that will be included in the resolution right now. It also, in some ways, depends on what the final housing element in sites inventory looks like, which we don't, you know, we don't know exactly what that will be yet at this point.
We, this is saying that we, the city, must make findings that those uses, existing uses of the non-vacant sites will likely discontinue in the planning period, meaning we need to demonstrate with evidence that that club that's on that site will be dis-, will discontinue its activity in the next eight years. Is that, am I, is that how I'm, I'm understanding it?
Uh, I mean...
Is that what the city is supposed to do, to, to, to prove, to put some evidence that that use will, will go away? How can we, how can the city say that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good question. Um, it's, it's kind of crazy that, like, I don't know what the state wants from us, honestly, but, um, yeah, we're supposed to put forth some kind of substantial out... We're supposed to put forth some kind of evidence or reasoning why we think it's possible, that, we don't have to say that the use is definitely going to discontinue. I mean, we, we definitely, we're not supposed to...
It even says that absent that, that finding, the existing uses would be presumed to impede additional residential development and would not be utilized. So it's saying like, if you cannot make that finding, then you cannot use that site.
That's, that's what, that's what state law says, yes.
So how can we?
I, I would...
The site inventory relies upon, so, I mean, it looks like, it looks to me like, once we put this inventory in, more than fifty percent, yeah, so this inventory, when we put this inventory through, all the non-vacant sites, the city's gonna have to demonstrate that those existing buildings are going to go away in the next eight years.
Well, not that, not that they're going to, but that they are, uh, will likely discontinue, but I'm gonna defer to the consultant, so I'm sure of thought more about this than I have.
Yeah, Ryan Lester will go ahead and elaborate on that, because, uh, there's instances where a structure can, can remain and then you build behind it. So, I mean, that's not always the case.
Some of those, some of those sites are single-family houses.
Right, but some of those sites, if they're R two, R three, you can actually build behind them. And, and I will say this, we don't like this finding, but the state's telling us we have to put it in there. At the same time, the state doesn't know ultimately if people are gonna do it or not. But if we have the land and we have it zoned, then we can include it. I don't know if you wanna...
But it says based on substantial evidence. I mean, can, can, basis substantial evidence means we have substantial evidence that that church is gonna seize operations?
I think it may, sorry, I, I don't mean to cut you off. I think if I had to conjecture, I would say, it doesn't necessarily mean that whatever is on that property now is going to get razed to the ground. I think it probably is more likely means, um, there's a potential, it's reasonable to think that more housing will be developed on that site than currently exists, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna convert... I'll, I'll let the consultant speak to this.
Sixteen uses will likely discontinue. I don't know. What, what, how do you read that?
Yeah, so...
Let me ask one quick question before you answer that. I know some of those sites, and I know the minute anybody else interprets what these guys have just said, the city's gonna get a letter from them saying, I do not plan on discontinuing my use. Will they be able then to still do a finding?
I'm gonna let the consultant speak to this, but I would say, if, if, if the city gets a letter from someone that says, over my dead body, you are not going to change the use on my property, like, yeah, that would make it difficult.
And, and I would say that, that, that would apply to the two rezone sites, right? Because all the other sites are already zoned for that, they already have the opportunity to. I'll point out just a few things. So first, this is, this only applies to our lower income sites. So a site that is above moderate, maybe there's one house there and you can fit four, we've counted four, it wouldn't apply to those, those sites. This is specifically for our lower income sites, used to meet the lower income Rena. The second thing I will say is that HCD looks for certain things to be discussed in the document to kind of prove this, right? They don't expect us to go through and prove that the leases are gonna be up in the planning period. A lot of that information just isn't out there anyway. What they wanna see is that there is evidence of trends, either in the city or in the region, that are similar, right? And you can speak to those trends, and you have some evidence going, you're not just like saying, oh, I'm, we're gonna, we're gonna do this and it hasn't been done here, right? That's why we have to use a lot of conservative calculations in, in, in our sites inventory. We don't wanna base everything on the max, there's not trends to back that up, right? So HCD looks for some justification in the document to, to, to work towards meeting this. What they're responding to is, in previous cycles, when they didn't require something like this, cities would, uh, would knowingly choose sites that literally... cities would, uh, would knowingly choose sites that literally are never going to be developed, ever, right?
I think HCD here is, is, is saying, look, Bumpo, don't BS, yeah. Don't, don't BS us by, by putting sites that you know you're not going to be able to build on. And so they're saying, show us that you are, you have evidence or you are, you know, confident that these sites could be built on. Anyway, I'm just, I'm just curious to see what this wording will look like in the, in the adopting resolution, because it, it's, thanks for pointing it out, because I, I, it, I, yeah, I missed it.
That, that's one of the reasons why.
I could ask you a quick question. I heard you say it only applies to the sites that were rezoned. Is that a, did I miss any of that?
Yeah, so if we, if we wrote in a rezoned site in the sites inventory and then the owner came out and said, I don't want to be rezoned, I don't support this, I won't build what you're planning to, then we cannot really justify using that site.
If a site was, let's say it's in an R two zone and it's only got one house on it.
Yeah.
And you use that to say, we're going to put four houses, just, I'm not saying you did that, whatever. So we didn't have to rezone that site. They could do it, but they send a letter and say, I'm not going to do what you're saying. That's not a rezone, right? That still would be in that condition, right?
Correct, yeah.
So it's not just rezoned?
Well, you could probably actually still use that site. The justifications for sites are different, depending on whether it's above moderate or lower income. HCD would flag it if it was lower income.
If the guy says he's not going to do it, then you'd have to take that out of the inventory.
Um, no, you wouldn't necessarily have to. If it's already zoned for that and, because, I mean, uh, somebody could come in and say, hey, I'll give you X amount of dollars for that site, he may reconsider. It's already zoned, the city's provided the zoning, especially for above-moderate sites. The, the feasibility argument, HCD won't really even question feasibility at all, because it's above moderate. Anything can happen on that site. For lower-income sites, they want to see a little more justification. And I, I will say that this finding is being made in that exact wording all over the state. We have clients in the Bay Area that literally, they have fairly new uses. You, you really have to prove by looking at the building age, by looking at the improvement to, to land value ratio and things like that, to get it at, at justifying your sites. And, and we've done that.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right, do we... No, I know, I'm just saying, like, if Commissioner Gonzalez has more...
Um, so on page one dash eighteen.
We're going to go one, but, huh. Sorry, which page?
One dash eighteen.
One dash eighteen. Now, the, the actual document.
Yeah, the actual document. It's one of the actions slash objectives to H dash A eleven, affirmatively furthering fair housing. G says, adopt an anti-displacement strategy for underutilized housing element sites with existing residential uses. The strategy shall include just cause eviction protections and the right of return for existing residents. So for the consultants, the first right of return is at them saying, okay, once we, let's say we're tearing down this house and we rebuilt it, are they going to have to rent it at that same price they were previously renting it, or they just have the first, okay, you can rent it, but it's going to be at this next new, the ladder, so can we, is that something we can explicitly state in G?
Do you want to make a motion that we state that?
And then, just one other thing.
Yeah, that's, that's the motion.
Yes.
So you're talking about the new rental market, right? They build those new houses and they're going to displace people. They offer it, hey, do you, do you want to live in this new unit? It's now X number of dollars. Is that what you're getting at?
Yes, but also the just cause eviction. I don't, I think it's going to deter people from adding to their properties.
But that was something that HCD, um, did they tell us to specifically do that or no?
Yeah, so they wanted to see, uh, anti-displacement measures. These, these are two that I've included as, as, at my suggestion. I've left them purposefully a little vague, because you're not, we're not adopting that strategy right now. I wanted to give the city the opportunity to have these, have these conversations and figure out, okay, well, just, just cause, there's a lot of different things that cities can put into an anti-displacement ordinance that relate to just cause. It's not really appropriate for me to decide which ones of those are included now. It's appropriate for me to suggest the action, to give the city, I think, two years to address that action and to figure out what they want included in that. These, that's not an ordinance that's being adopted with this document, right? So the, I, I believe the action, I can't see it there, but I believe it's in, in the next two years or by, you know, by twenty twenty-five. So you can define, and cities do this, they define what's included in their, in their just cause requirements. And they, they define what's included, um, in their first right of return requirements within the ordinance at the time that they adopt it.
And we have to have this in there, or can later, can the city...
Do we need to reopen public comment, Nick? You're fidgeting like crazy. Let's reopen it. Let's reopen it.
I, I highly suggest that you don't start adding additional restrictions on the rental property. You'll destroy the rental property market. Just refer to state law. State law has just cause. State law takes care of this. Just put it in that you defer to the state law. Don't add additional restrictions. How am I going to be incented to take a property and, and, and redevelop it if suddenly I have all these other myriad of issues now on top of the regular development process? It, it's killing, it's killing things in some areas.
So you're saying that there's already anti, anti-displacement?
Yeah, there's already, state law already has, state laws, California state law already has just cause eviction. California state law already has dislocation. It's one month's rant and, and so many days and so many exceptions. Just leave it to state law. Don't add another barrier. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
We have one more.
Susan Gallagher, I was just, if we're going to rezone those two lots, one being over on Walnut for more houses and then you did Mosaic Garden for more houses, that already added forty, sixty houses? To add back into your numbers?
That's already in the, we've already included that in the inventory of the Walnut property.
You already included that in the Walnut property? Okay.
Inventory. The Walnut property is included in the inventory.
Okay, well, that makes sense a little bit, but I still think everything is just way too far apart to...
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, uh, what do you want to do about this provision?
You have any comments from the rest of you?
I would support just referencing the state law.
If state law already has anti-displacement strategies in there, I, yeah, I don't, I don't see why.
Would the appropriate item G, I mean, I'm just trying to think, to satisfy HCD's desire to see something like this? Would it be adopt an anti-displacement strategy that aligns with state law for underutilized housing element sites, blah, 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 blah? Would, would that be sufficient, or are they looking for above and beyond?
This isn't responsible of an HCD comment, so we can't just ignore it.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. They would want to see some type of displacement strategy.
But if we can, like, make it as vague as, as per state law?
Um, defaulting to state law, they don't consider that an actual action by a city. So if you're defaulting to requirements they're already requiring, then they're saying, okay, well, now you're not providing meaningful actions. You're just defaulting to us. We want you to do something more, right? And that's what a lot of HCD comments come down to, unfortunately.
So I, I think, again, I, I, I'm not saying that it would only default to state law, but can item G, the statement, say, we're still going to come back to the planning commission with an anti-displacement strategy that outlines state law and it's going to have those housing element sites? And then maybe we'll have a couple additional recommendations in there for planning commission to consider. But then at the end of the, at the end of that decision-making process, we, the city, who does not currently have an anti-displacement strategy, would have an anti-displacement strategy, whatever those strategies are. That will be determined at a later date when we return prior to twenty twenty-five. Is, would that be sufficient as a statement in there? I mean, do we have to say the strategy shall include just cause and all of that?
To that point, what about we just change the shell to a should?
Uh, yeah, we, we can, we can do that.
Or add the word explore.
They do, they do want to see...
Yeah.
Just taking out, taking the options out.
But let's not put something that mand, I mean, shell is, shell means we have to do it. Should means we should consider it. That's a big difference there. So if, if a should statement would suffice, I would rather do that.
Also, I'll just say, there's nothing in this language that requires you to adopt something that's more stringent than state law. So if we just left the language as it is, you could still just say, you could just adopt a, a policy that basically said, we're going to enforce state law.
I'm, I'm just...
Or it enforces state law.
I'm just saying, you could...
No, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is that it, it, there was, there was a comment from HCD. If we don't put anything, this comment is going to come back. And, and so what are we going to do then?
What, what if we just added the word explore between G dot and adopt?
So they want to see the word adopt in there. They want to see some options for what you might adopt, but we don't have to dictate that now. I, I agree with you that the language says, we're going to do this and this. It doesn't have to do that. It's, it could say, adopt a, d- anti-displacement strategy for underutilized housing element sites that potentially includes this, this, something a little...
Could it say the strategy may include rather than shall include?
Exactly, yeah.
So you could say the strategy may include the following rather than shall include the following?
I see, I see...
But you just said that it can refer to state law.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make it as easy as we can, like, if, if, I'm, I'm hearing that they can just suggest options.
I think the angst we have, which has permeated the time I've been on here, is duplicate regulations. They just repeat what's, you know, we're going to do the health department's job, we're going to do the DMV's job. Now we're going to do the state job. But that's kind of, but having made that little stay...
We're being told that that comment is not going to go away.
I, I know, I understand that. So why don't we just change the shall to may and be done?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying now. Shall to, shall to, to...
There's no other way around it?
I mean, you could, you could, uh, suggest a, a separate anti-displacement strategy here. What I tend to do in policy documents like this is say things like, um, that, uh, may include, but is not limited to, and then state the things that should be considered or could be considered.
Yeah, but I don't think we have.
HCD wants to see that, to see that.
Could, could we use the wording, like you said, well-considered? So instead of that shall, well-considered, because ultimately, it's going to come back to the commission. It's going to come back to the city council, and if they decide they don't want this language, they're going to do it. And then when we respond to, uh, in our general plan annual report, we'll just say, we did this instead. It's, it's not a deal breaker for the housing element. I mean, this is not something that is going to ultimately be a, a non-show starter, because we've got to come back and do, amend the code and this could change.
I think with this, I think when you read this here, right, from a policy perspective, it's, right, the, the state establishes the measure, right? The measure is the state, right? All they're looking for is the, what does the city have, right? To correlate enforcement or strategy of their measure, right? I think we're, when we read this, we're reading into it too much. It's just like, what are, what kind of a mechanism do we have in place here for a city for, for this, right? I think that, because the measure is the state.
The measure is the state, but what we just said, can we just refer to state law? We've been told, no, the HCD, the HCD will not accept that as an action. They will, they will. Can, can someone say they will, the consultant say they won't, Nick Gonzalez says they will. So I, I'm, I'm lost. So I don't know.
I thought what I heard is that we could just change shall to may. Is that, you think that would work?
I think it should be, yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement that it should be changed to should or, or, or consider or whatever, so...
I mean, based on my experience with HCD phrasing it in that way and still listing what you may consider is what they're looking for. They really want the commitment to adopt something. And they want it to go slightly beyond, at least slightly beyond state law, right? That's part of the new fair housing thing, so...
No.
But I like, from all of this thing too, right? So we're, we're adding a lot of substance to the document. That's where I read this, right, from a policy perspective, right? And this Christie, this question's really for Christie. Christie, when we, when we provide this stuff, right, so we're going to adopt a strategy for anti-displacement, right? Who at the city enforces that? Right, is there a code person?
Probably me.
Right, I mean, that's, so we are, we're opening Pan, when we start putting verbiage like that, we open Pandora's box.
That's what the state does to us. I mean, it is, we all know it. The state imposes requirements because they want all these wonderful things to happen. They give us no money to do it, and then, yes, that responsibility will fall to someone here at the city to cover. Uh, I would love to be able to tell them, no, I'm not doing that, take it out, but I won't have a compliant housing element. So, yeah, the state's real tricky in the way they hold our feet to the fire and force us to do things that is their job to do. So, sorry, I won't get on my rant. But, um, I, I think doing the may, because y- you guys are going to be able to have another bite at this apple. We're going to be coming back with an anti-displacement strategy where we're going to determine who would enforce it, how it would work, all of that good stuff, and exactly what it would cover. And it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from the commission, is you would want to start with the bare bones of what state law requires, and then maybe what are some of the little things we can throw on top that are, are not too impactful to landlords' rights and laws and all of that good stuff? Because there is so much stuff at this point in time. So, um, I, I just don't want you to feel like the, I, I agree that the shell should be changed. And maybe we'll be okay with that. Uh, HCD may be okay with that, and that's my, my hope. But I, I agree with the consultant that I wouldn't just redline it and strike it out.
It's your motion.
I just want to do whatever you want, because it's late.
Yeah. Honestly.
And then, as your experience, have you ever referred it back to state law?
So for certain things, um, uh, cities can, cities and counties can defer to state law, like, um, your ADU ordinance. You could just completely defer out to the state, because the state has all these regulations. When it comes to, uh, and, to displacement, uh, HCD considers that a fair housing issue. And they actually have the authority, uh, in state law to require you to do meaningful proactive action, right? And so this is one of those things that saying, hey, you need to do something about displacement, is, it fits in with that AB six eighty-six affirmatively furthering fair housing stuff, where they, they are really looking for cities and counties to make meaningful proactive actions of their own. So just in this case, just deferring to state law on displacement because it's a fair housing issue, I don't think would suffice at all, and that's why they've asked us for a, a, an anti-displacement measure of some type.
I'm going to further your question, Brianna. So let's just say we changed it to, you know, what Brianna's recommendation is. It goes to council, council approves it that way, it goes to state HCD. They kick it back and say, you didn't meet this requirement. I, is that how it would play out?
So if it's going to play out and it's going to have to go through review, why don't we just do it? And then next time, we'll know what we have to do. That, that's my question. To you, the consultant.
So, uh, every year, cities and counties have to put in an annual progress report specific to their housing element, where they review each of their programs and their progress on, on going towards those. Uh, HCD actually has the authority to decertify your housing element if you're not carrying out...
Her question was, if we stick to our guns and say, refer to state...
If we stick to our guns and say, refer to state, then it'll go to the council, council will approve it, then it'll go to the state and they'll kick it back and we'll have to review it. That was... Then it'll go to the state and they'll kick it back and we'll have to review it. That was the question. Is that true?
Yes, but you won't review it in the next housing element. You can't kick it down the road for eight years.
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying this is a draft that hasn't been approved by HCD. It goes to our city council, they approve it, it goes to HCD for another review. And you stated that HCD will typically kick back and like, or they do their 60-day review. And then they're gonna have a, probably another letter with, um, other items we need to address. If we change this to the way Commissioner Gonzalez would like to change it, would, would that just then be identified in that second letter that we're gonna receive saying, um, no, this is not, you know, either quantitated enough or defined enough to meet our desires for furthering affirmative fair housing.
In other, in other words, how about we try saying, refer to state law and see what happens? Is that just in?
You can do that, absolutely. But yeah, you're, as far as review of the housing element, I apologize. I was, I was thinking of the anti-displacement strategy, but as far as the housing element, you can, and.
Yeah, because that might, that might actually cause the HCD to, to, to give us a more detailed, pointed comment on what they wanna see.
I, I can tell you though, that they, they will not give you a detailed, pointed comment. They'll just say, you did not address sufficiently.
Okay, well, then that case, okay, okay.
Well, then we'll know what to do for the next time.
Okay, we tried.
So, so the only other thing I'm gonna add here, because I always like to play devil's advocate, look at both sides. I think we have a consultant that we hired, we're paying a lot of money to. They're very specialized in this and they're doing it. They talk to HCD all the time. I'm singing your praises here. So they know what they're doing. So what they're recommending we do at this point is to hopefully not get another letter and get a compliant housing element. You're pushing and leaving that builder's remedy window open longer and longer until we get a compliant housing element from HCD certified. So I wanna throw that out there, because that's a huge risk to take. Because nobody's really known that builder's remedy is a thing. We're not advertising it, but we've made a statement tonight. So I do wanna make you aware that I think this is the first time it's been open, that it's fair game. So just, if our consultant is saying it, if I was, if I was in your seat, I would do what our consultant asks. But I understand you guys may feel very strongly about this, so I, I am gonna throw both sides out there.
I, I'm gonna push back on that a little bit. I, I think if we had a builder's remedy, we'd end up with housing. Sounds like a win-win to me.
Yes.
But I think the real threat.
I put a house, a house project in.
It might, but I think the real threat, to be honest, is the next time we go in for a grant, we can't check that block. I don't think they're gonna come take the money back, but personal opinion. But I think, in my experience with proposals, you have to check the block, and you can't falsify checking block. So the real, the real danger, the real threat, if we don't have a housing compliant, in my never-to-be-humble opinion, is they can't check the block anymore and we may not get the, the funding, because all the blocks aren't checked, yeah.
Well, in my professional opinion, that 450,000 that we're supposed to get for that permit-ready ADU program, and my construction loan financing program for the ADU program, I will not be able to do. I will not get that funding. I checked the box, but I, I haven't received the funding yet, and I'm sure they will not give it to me. So I know that we like to gamble, but I think we need to be careful.
Okay. Uh, Brianna, motion.
I wanna first hear your opinion on what you think.
No, I mean, my, my, at this point, I think it's, I mean, my, again, it's my opinion. I, I agree, we should probably try and strike it. And not strike it, but refer to state law, and then see what they say. This is just me, one, one, one commission.
But last question, so, and, and Christie, and for the consultant, please chime in. From a, with an anti-displacement strategy, we haven't had one, correct? Okay, so to me, seeing this again as, as a policy person, right? This is the first iteration that we're going through this. That first sentence should say, we establish, right? Because we've never had it, right? So the city's gonna either way. We could adopt one, we could create a fine, hunky-dory and dandy plan that we put together, right? It goes up there. They could still nitpick it and send it back and say it's non-conformity, right? Or doesn't meet their standard. So if, if we're establishing it, right, there's that difference of you're establishing it first to get approval. Because if it hasn't been submitted, that's.
The, the anti-displacement strategy would not go to the state. We just are adopt, we are, so they don't look at the strategy. And that's why I'm saying, you're just making a statement that you plan on doing this and that it, it may meet their requirements or that extra overarching requirement that they want. And that's why the may statement is awesome, because then when we bring an actual strategy, the person who's adopting it and approving it is probably gonna be coming to you, recommendation for adoption, and then to city council, and city council would adopt it. HCD doesn't approve it.
But what if they ask to, so, again, thinking.
The annual report.
So in 2025, if they said, did you adopt a strategy? Yes, we did.
So they don't ask to clarify it? They don't send an auditor to review it?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion that we change the word shall to should. And that's the only change. Do I have a second?
I'm, motion to refer it to state law. All in favor?
I second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
My motion passes four, zero. Missioner Braxton, it's your turn.
I only had one thing, because a lot of the things we covered.
I also have one.
I just had, Christie's gonna start throwing things at me. So on B5, in the very back, in appendix B.
Appendix B.
Right, in appendix B, and then if we just look at it, HA4. And it's just like a, it's not a big question, it's just more like a administrative question. We talk about like, we're gonna work with nonprofits and Habitat for Humanity, right?
Hold on one second, what?
Appendix B, it's B5.
Page five?
Page B5.
B5, HA dot four. Um, and it's just like a, just a generic question. We talk about, hey, we're gonna work with nonprofits, we're gonna work with Habitat for Humanity, so on and so forth. When I go to the very beginning of the document, right, we talk about, the very, in the very beginning of the dot, whole document, so, in the introduction, right? So in the introduction, we kinda start talking about like, hey, we're gonna have extreme low income, moderate income, homeownership opportunities, this, this, or this, or that. We, are we not indicating like, we will work with that stuff? Like, we're willing to, or is that not the plan? Right? Because we call it out in the back of the document, but all of the key stakeholders that are, are here, are we, or are we categorizing that into a different?
We'll clarify that, Ryan, we'll clarify.
Yeah, just to clarify that, that, that appendix is a review of previous housing element programs? So those aren't the programs for this housing element. That's us showing HCD, hey, here's what the city did in the previous round. Here's what we responded to and what we're gonna do. Should we keep this program? Should we delete it? Was it really infeasible? And so we should revise it. That's what that appendix is for.
And you'll note that one says, keep, update for clarity, because obviously Habitat for Humanity is defunct, so, yeah, I said.
So just one food for thought of city council's getting that I would make sure that we kinda put a note in there, like a star, a bullet point, like, hey, these inputs are from a previous, right?
Oh, yeah, for clarity, for them.
The way I'm reading this is it's for this.
Got it.
So that was just that.
Sure.
And then.
You said one.
The other one, the other one just dawned on me. The, the scales that are in here, when we are doing like the surveys, right, when we're looking at rent, right? These, the surveys that went out for the community, is that, are we looking at rent and stabilizing of the rent? Is that like current day or is that a year ago? Right? Because, you know, the rents have significantly increased in town. So when we look at here, these charts that are on here, it shows like a rent is at this dollar value. What were the dates that we came up with that dollar value?
What pages is that on?
I gotta look for it now. I lost, I had my pen in there.
And, and that, that probably actually goes to a lot of our data. Um, this project started two years ago, and the, the data and the initial data analysis, um, it is dated then. I will say, even the data that HCD provides is even older, unfortunately, um, including how they came up with the RENA. It was decided before COVID. A lot of things have changed. Um, but I, it, it is a two-year, three-year project, so, and that, that was one of the early stages. So we probably did that in the first six months of the project, so it's at least a year and a half old at this point. Uh, we, at the time of writing it, we used the most update, up-to-date data we have. But the whole process of going through HC review takes like a year just in itself. So they don't require you to continually update that. And, and in, in every jurisdiction we work with, the rent is more now than it was when we wrote the document, unfortunately.
Thank you.
I think you were referring to page 266, and the table was H23, since you were asking, Brianna. Which two, uh, two, 266? 266, in the housing element. Two dash 66? Yeah.
Two dash 66.
And it looks like the source was Zillow and it was 2022.
Oh.
I wish I could find on OneBedroom, Brianna.
Okay, uh, a lot of the stuff that I had was already brought up, great. So I only have one thing, and it's very easy, I hope, page 1-16. Program H dash A dot 8, municipal code updates. Everybody there? 116, all right. The city shall update the Lompoc municipal code to the extent required for compliance with state housing law within three years of the adoption deadline, February 15, 2023. Timing, by February 15, 2025. Shouldn't that be 2026? Within three years of 2023?
If you look off to the side, it does say February 15, 2025. So that, we just didn't put it over here.
But that's three years, within three years of 2023, shouldn't that be 2026?
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay, because we have 2025. I believe that's correct. Is that correct? Yeah, so we'll go ahead and make that change. Thank you for the spotting that.
That was my thing. My, my.
Other ones are two years, that one's three years, so, yeah, thank you.
Silly comment, but can you make?
I just, I just gave you another year, guys, come on.
Can you make a quick motion? Sorry.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. I move that we, um, modify, correct, uh, page 1-16 to read February, by February 15, 2026, instead of by February 15, 2025. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes four, zero. Okay, I think we're done with all our comments. So what happens now? Do we just make a motion? Approval, including all the other motions, all the, the comments that we made?
If you are inclined to recommend adoption of this housing element, what I would recommend as a motion, and you're welcome to just say the motion that the attorney just made, is to recommend adoption of the housing element.
Wait, we're not recommending adoption, we're recommending recommend, we're recommending moving it to the city council, right?
But aren't you recommending that they adopt it with the changes that you've suggested? Wouldn't that be the motion?
Well, yeah, we're, well.
Not necessarily.
I wanna recommend it to, to go to the city council for approval with the comments that we made. We're not adopting.
No, but you're, you're recommending that they adopt it with your comments. Or like, you're, I'm not telling you, I'm not telling you what you want. How I, how I understand what you're saying, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth in any way. What I understand you saying is, city council, we think you should adopt this, but only if you make all the changes that we have suggested tonight. But if you make all those changes that we've suggested tonight, we think you should adopt it. Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's, that's the idea, the general idea, but, and again, this is.
But if that's not what you mean, then you're, but if that's not what you're suggesting, then it could be something different.
My understanding is that the city council will consider this document with our suggestions. And then, and they will then approve it or, or push it back to us if they're not. So I mean, is the city council going to read this document and, and, and discuss it and, uh, debate it? Or are they gonna just take our recommendation face value?
Well, the city council.
I don't think we are approving this document. It's the city council that has proven this document, right?
That's absolutely true. So under state law, you do not have the power to adopt, to approve this document. Only the city council does. Also, state law requires, it's a requirement of state law, that any change of the general plan first comes to the city council, sorry, to the planning commission. And there's also a requirement that the planning commission send a written recommendation to the city council, and then that the city council consider the, the, a change to the general plan in a public hearing. So they will do that. So they will have a public hearing on this item, um, at a, at a city council meeting. Um, as part of the staff report for that meeting, there will be a resolution that is signed by you um, that makes a recommendation as to what you all think as a commission, the city council should do with the document. Generally, generally, the recommendation is, is one of three things. Do not approve this document, do approve this document, or approve this document, but only if you make some changes to it, which is what I understand you do have done tonight, or to be saying tonight.
And I wanna add one thing, because we kinda missed something. You removed two sites, so that was part of the motion. But we didn't add any sites. So we, we do need to talk about that site. I didn't get to it, because there's so much going on. There's a site there that Commissioner Bridge mentioned, but I don't think there was a motion after that.
I thought his motion, yeah, his motion was to look at that site, Brian. Also, we don't.
It was to, to add it, okay.
That one site.
No, we, we even mentioned what the address was of that site, so that you can.
Yeah.
Right, okay, then I'll change my notes to that site. 1220 West Ocean.
But do those sites, do those meet the numbers? Because if not, then we don't have sites, so then we would deny it to review the sites.
I think we're gonna be really close. I calculated 41 units for that site on West Ocean. I think, and I'll let the consultant correct me, I think right now we have a buffer of 11, am I correct? So 53, so we're probably short about two. I think you eliminated 55, we only got 43 out of that.
I think you're rounding wrong, Brian, and I think those two units will happen on that site.
What, two units? I'm sorry.
You're rounding, you're rounding wrong. Sites, so.
Oh, okay. Well, it's close. It's very, very close.
I just wanna be clear that if it comes up with, that the number is not sufficient, staff will be recommending, I presume, an additional site. I mean, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I guess it wasn't in the motion, but the, the intent there was there. And any other sites.
Required.
That, that the staff can bring up to meet the required number, um, yes, we, we're not gonna go out and look at the map right now and look at all.
Well, we do have one site that we could put up on the screen, and it could be very quick. And I think Commissioner Bridge might be aware of it, if you wanna bring that up. What's that?
What site is?
What site?
Um, it is, uh, by the movie theater. It would be just south of the movie theater, not the Old Town Movie Theater, but another movie theater.
Yeah, I think that's a good site to develop.
Um, actually, we have it in the slideshow. Yeah, so it's the very end of the slideshow.
Barton, Barton or, oh, Gemini is not a.
They're gonna, she's gonna bring it up. It's at the end of the presentation. We were kinda expecting this.
While you're bringing that up, I have another question. With what we've heard today, and like, maybe Christie, it's a question to you. In the past, I've seen, uh, from the planning commission make a recommendation, and then the staff goes forward because they don't agree with that recommendation, and makes a secondary recommendation. Is your intent to take the document as it stands to the city council and say, this is what you recommend, but the planning commission recommends something else?
I'm trying to think of what changes happened. I don't think there was anything. Did you, Brian?
It's the parking lot.
I think, um, yeah, no, I'm fine with the alternative sites. As long as we hit our number, I'm good. I don't care.
Yeah. So this is the site where the theater is, um, what street is that?
Yeah, so it's Barton.
West Barton. So just to the south of that, see that big vacant piece? You could change that, either all of the lot or part of the lot, because lots can have two zoning districts. You could change that, yes, they can. You could make that either R2 or R3, that vacant piece right there.
There you go.
And you got residential right behind it, and to the, to the south and to the west.
Yep, so let's add that to, do you see, do we need to add that to the motion or?
But from an EIR, right, and then, right, because like you you start to get into that co-use of a parking lot and an entrance into a facility, right? Does that limit the?
Well, the developer would have to look at that, but there is one driveway that that has access to that, we we usually don't work on that right now. But we also would want a recommendation on, you want a medium density, a high density, or leave it up to staff?
I'd like to add to my motion that we consider this site as well and leave the density up to staff.
Do I have a second? I second. All in favor say aye.
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 No.
No.
Okay.
Do you want to, sorry, I was taking notes down.
This one doesn't pass.
Do we want to further discuss that so that we can understand where the commission's coming from, and then we have another site we can suggest?
So my take on it is is that it's, you're putting in that's, yeah, we're gonna say there's an area of land to do it, but the commercial piece there, right, that's just, there's, it's commercial. Right, you got the hotel, you got all of the commercial buildings, you got, you know, Wild West Pizza, all of that there, the hotel across, the movie theater, right? It's, I I see it if I'm a builder and I'm trying to develop a piece of land, that's not a piece of prime property for me. Right, so I'm kind of looking at that from that rationale, like if I'm putting my foot in someone's shoes to develop here, right, it's just, it's not appealing.
Okay.
As of other sites, there are more other, to me, there's more other appealing places in town than to going there.
Okay, let's put up the other site that we have, I think it's near our church.
I just want to remind everyone real quick, we didn't pre-vet these sites for conflict of interest, so please just think in the back of your head, if you own property within five hundred feet of any of these new sites that are being proposed, please let me know.
So this site is fifteen twenty-three West North Avenue, if we want, we could put up the aerial photo. It's R-one, you could get a potential eighteen units, which would more than satisfy the deficiency that we have.
It's already, it's already zone R-one.
Yeah, mm-hmm. So, oh, sorry, but it's not part of the inventory, so not a rezone, it would just be added to the inventory, thank you.
So see, this one wouldn't even need to be rezoned, to be put in the inventory.
No, okay, you want to explain?
So in order for, in order for any site to be considered towards low-income capacity, it has to allow twenty dwelling units an acre. So I I imagine that that current zoning doesn't allow that density.
We're looking for lower income.
Yeah.
Sites.
Yeah, so it it would have to be upzoned, yeah.
To R-three.
Yeah, to R-three, yes.
Either R-two or R-three, correct?
I don't, I don't believe R-two does not, yeah, it'd have to be R-three MU or, yeah.
R-three would get you twenty-two units per acre, so that would meet that requirement.
Yeah, but it's surrounded by R-one, right?
It is, but at the same time, a lot of people think that if it's medium density or high density residential, that it has to be apartments and it has to be attached. It doesn't have to be, it can be detached units, it just will be a little bit denser. It don't, it doesn't have to actually look like an apartment complex, that could be small lot, a small lot development.
But I have a dumb question, and it's a dumb question. Of the breakdown, right? Of like, say, there's sixteen thousand or sixteen hundred new homes coming in, right? Do we have a projected map like this? Right, because I'm just thinking of other people, like if I'm a concerned citizen coming in, I want to see what the growth is, like where are these? And is it broken down into this map so I can come see it? I mean, that's the kind of transparency we need for people who have questions to be asked, it needs to be simplified.
Yeah, that's that's the map right over here that we have.
No, I'm even broken down even further, similar to this, like, hey, if this thing's highlighted in yellow, this area is R-two, and we're gonna potentially build that here. Right, we're not like, we don't, this would be like good even for me to be able to skim through and look, right? Like, these are sites that are have availability for R-two or or R-one, right? We, I think in order for us to make a good educated decision, like the visualization piece is key.
Right, so it would be exactly the way we have it now. It would be in the table of inventory, it would be a map that shows it rezoned, and then it still has to go to a hearing. So it goes to a hearing before the commission, and it goes to a hearing before the city council. So we would do it exactly the way the structure of the housing element is right now. Map it, table it, and give all the information about it.
So Commissioner Braxton, am I understanding correctly, are you thinking more of a conceptual of what that site would look like with that dense of units? Yeah, we don't do that, that that, I mean, yeah, and that's that's expensive. But I I get it, what you're asking for, I think that some people will come to the counter and they're buying a house, and they will say, there's a vacant lot right next to this house I'm buying, what can happen there? And we try, always try to educate them and say, right now, if you look at the zoning code, here's what it says, because the zoning code is hard to understand for people. And then explain to them what could go there. But I always like to add that people can apply for rezones. And that's why it's important to kind of be aware of what's happening here at planning commission hearings. So, but no, we don't do like a conceptual showing of potential.
I would recommend we ask for public comment on this too, since it wasn't previously brought up before public comment.
Yes, let's open up public comment.
Nicholas Gonzalez? I mean, I understand and through design, you might make it less intrusive, but remember, again, if you put R-two, you got the R-two standard. So now you got the height, you got the other issues. So same, my same concern about the other stuff.
Do you have other sites?
You want the parking lots back? I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I I thought actually, was it just the two that we had? I thought we had one more, but maybe only we had two.
Susan Gallagher. I feel like they're rushing into this again, you're throwing stuff out at the last minute, and it it seems like it's just hurry up, sweep it under the carpet, get it done. Yet we're not thinking this all the way through. I think you need one more meeting to iron it out better. So everybody understands, there's a lot of questions on both sides.
Do we have R-two available over by Home Depot? On that walnut area?
No, but across the street, we're proposing from Home Depot, the hospital as a rezone. That's the sixteen hundred East Ocean Avenue site. But I don't think we have any.
Going in, right, from a number of R-two, right, I was trying to round my head around.
Thank you, Camry. So yeah, you see it on the screen that there isn't any nearby. I guess over there there is, but that's already part of the inventory of the, just west of the hospital. Actually, that's gonna be a parking lot, so scratch that spot.
I'm talking if we scroll over behind like the Grifka building, right in that area, where that potentially new development's going in.
Oh, by River Terrace?
Yeah.
No, there's nothing over there.
And what about the? The parcel of?
We have a site that's RA. That's, yeah, thank you, Camry, she reads my mind. So that that site right there, I talked to the owner, and he is interested in building on that property, doesn't have a proposal yet. But you could, you know, suggest that be even higher density than RA. Residential agriculture.
That's like the lowest density imaginable.
Really, really low. I can look it up, give me one second.
That's right by the one, the one on the other side of the.
Residential agricultural, in case you didn't hear, Christie, is two-point-two dwelling units per acre.
Yeah, yes.
And that is the lowest that the city has, two-point-two.
But and we would need R-three?
No, not necessarily, well, actually, would you, for the? I'm sorry, what was that?
What's the number that we're trying to get into, is it forty-two, one, I mean, are we?
No, we're only shy just like two or three units.
We need two units, yeah.
So I mean, if you want, you could you could still proceed.
Build them in my backyard.
Sorry, can I make a?
But I need to recuse myself in that case.
Can I ask a question? Could we just upzone an existing R-two to an R-three?
Well, let me ask you this.
Okay.
Are we exactly on the market terms, or are we over in market?
Over, what do you mean? There was a question from.
So why don't you take part of the ADUs like Nick suggested, and make those low-income?
We don't, we don't, right now, we don't have anything in place that, well, and Christie could speak on this, where we have a covenant for those. Right now, they're just all market rate, and we don't require those to be, and it, for it to be affordable, and right now in the city, it has to be ten or more units in order to kick in our inclusionary housing ordinance. So that might come back later, 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 once we have the permit program in place, but right now, we have nothing that can guarantee that.
And the zoning on the site has to be, allow at least a density of twenty dwelling units an acre?
You mentioned upzoning some of the existing R-two to R-three?
I I, I'm not a planner, but I just suggested that that is an, that is an option, that's another way you could get these units, that's all I'm saying. I don't, I don't, I don't have a site to propose, though.
Have we, if the pale blue dot thing falls apart, right? Have we ever looked at putting houses up there? I mean, it would be an opportune spot.
No, because it's a city park.
Further than the fact that it's a city park, there are restrictions on that site of what it can be used for, and that's education, science, and I don't know what the, recreation. So pale blue dot meets some of those, and then park is the other piece.
Low-income dorms for Hancock?
That's education. Hey, we we will get creative if we ever have to.
Two houses.
Would the commission, I mean, just to get through it, would the commission be amenable to having staff identifier, reanalyze stuff to make the right number, and then take that to council?
We, well, we we're gonna still have, they still have to come back to us for rezoning, right? There's like these, at least those two, and now it looks like this third one on West. So can you bring a couple of proposals during that meeting to rezone?
I think we have to have the housing element done first, right, Brian?
No, not necessarily, we've already started the process, so we already have this agendized, and it's been published in the paper for the November eighth meeting, for just those two sites. Now, that third site, we weren't prepared for that, but we're gonna have to come back to another meeting for that, and we also need to include it in the environmental documentation, which we haven't yet.
So there's gonna be another meeting for for those, for that extra.
Yeah.
Rezoning.
Yeah.
So at during, at that meeting, can you propose an next, another?
No, no, because it wasn't on the agenda.
It has, it has to be in this document, like we can't rezone it late. I don't know if I'm understanding your question correctly, but we can't wait until we do the rezone and then add it into the housing element, I mean, it it needs to be in the housing element. The general order is that you do the housing element, the housing element basically promises which properties you're gonna rezone, and then you rezone them.
So Christie, to your point, yes, we would be amenable to from staff to propose, you know, another site, but when are we gonna, when are we gonna do it?
Yeah, so you wouldn't get a bite at that apple, it would go to council. And then, I guess, my recommendation to the commission, if you wanted to vocalize any concerns about however we satisfied those couple of units that we're trying to find, maybe it's not a whole site, maybe it's, as was suggested, up, changing something from R-two to R-three. I'm not sure, but it's two, it's two units.
Is it possible to to not add one unit to one side on like, already on the inventory, and one unit to another side already on the inventory? I mean, we're that. Right, I mean, it it it's almost rounding error, right?
Right.
Percentages.
Yeah, I think there's definitely a chance we can find those two units elsewhere in the inventory, I just need to kind of go through the.
A site that has twenty-nine, put thirty, and a site that has sixty-four, put sixty-five. Huh? Yeah, all the, all that, but I mean, like, we have sites, we have sites with like sixty-four houses, and we do put sixty-five. We have sites with like thirty-eight, I do thirty-nine. Yeah, but it sounds like they can do that.
We think we solved your problem.
Right, what do you mean?
Tell them, Brian.
This site that we have on the screen, we could zone that, hopefully it's not spot zoning, maybe Brian can chime in. But we could make that MU instead of an R-three, because the MU is forty-four units per acre, as opposed to R-three is only twenty-two units per acre.
There you go, that's it.
So that site right there in front of CHC become fourteen dwelling units.
I told you staff could figure it out.
Well, that's actually Christie.
Okay, all right, so. So I don't think we need, I don't think we need to change the motion at all at this point, we're just gonna, because we said the density is up to you, so.
Wait, I thought, I I guess I don't know if I heard the density is up to you, Bart, no, because you already. Let let me make sure I understand, so this, the housing element already proposes to rezon this site to R-three, which.
No, no, this was not, this was a recommendation of Commissioner Bridge, this is a new site.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, and you and you guys left, you guys left it open to what it would be rezoned to?
Yes.
In that case, you do not need to change your motion, thank you.
Okay, so now back to the, the big one, so.
So what I'm thinking, Chair, that we submit our, we submit our track changes or our changes to the general pound, plan, housing update to city council for their review and adoption.
Okay, but.
Because that's, I mean, we're we're recommending our, you know, we're advising them that, hey, we're we're ready to go, at that point, it's for them to review and to start the adoption process.
Are we ready to do this? Because again, that's another assumption I I came in to this meeting, which was wrong, was that we were still on time to submit to to, for certification on time. And the clock was ticking, and we were all late, and, you know, and now I'm learning that, no, we've already been late since February, so. Yeah, yeah, now I do, now I do, and 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 so. So it's like, okay, yes, we are every day more, I guess, we're running the risk of getting builders remedy, thank you, and or not not get our our grant money approved. But we kind of already are in that situation, and.
Gotta make it right the first, if we're gonna, if we're already behind, we need to make it right.
And like, and like, so do we, do we, do we take more time to, but I, the other, the other, so that's, that's one, one feeling. The other feeling is that, okay, what else can we do to make it, to make it right?
I can tell you, I'm not gonna put words in Christie's mouth, but I'll, I'll ask her. If we don't approve it, my assumption is they're gonna take it to the council without our approval. Am I correct?
The way it works legally is you, if you make a motion, either to say, don't approve this, like, the the next step is you still take that to council with a with a recommendation, recommendation of not approving.
So they still go to the council.
Or, wait a minute, we do have the authority to extend the meeting, right?
You have the authority to continue the meeting, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so we, we could send it to the council with not approved, it still goes to the council. to the council, yes, or we continue, so I don't know.
But, but I think we play, you know, we've done our due diligence, right? We've made a bunch of several changes tonight, there's always that possibility, it goes to them, and even gets kicked back to us.
Yeah.
They may review, validate, and be like, hmm, you know what, maybe I need them to put their eyes on this again, dot the i's, cross the t's, ask more questions, give us questions, right? I think we need this.
Yeah, it's just, like I said, my other, my other side of me, 'cause I'm, I'm torn on this, I am, I'm really, I really am, yeah, the side of me says, well, what else are we gonna do, I mean, we cannot, I've heard Bailey Corridor mentioned, we cannot use the Bailey Corridor, we can't, it's, 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 it's out of the question right now. We can try and, and lobby for the next cycle, for the next time to use it, but I think that that train has gone, the train has passed.
Correct.
Correct me if I'm wrong.
But for those future...
You're absolutely correct, we cannot use Bailey, Bailey Corridor as our inventory.
I'm gonna reopen up public comment, because I can't bear to see Nick Gonzalez in the back keep saying, keep doing these things without, without having him talk, I wanna hear what he has to say.
Bailey Corridor's not in your sphere of influence right now, but what you put into a place today is gonna impact for the next eight years, the ability to bring that back in, and the whole, the whole precept at LAFCO, which, oh, Mr. Bridge was at LAFCO, but the others were not, was the whole precept of LAFCO, was that we haven't established the need to have Bailey Corridor.
Yeah, but the point is, right now, we cannot say, we're gonna put sites in the inventory that are in the Bailey Corridor, we cannot, we cannot put it in the inventory, they're not part of the city.
HCD on that letter asked how to address Bailey, asked for more information on Bailey Corridor, it hasn't even been discussed. HCD asked for clarification on Bailey Corridor.
Do we have the ability to put Bailey Corridor in...
It's in the general plan, it's in the SEQA document.
Do we have the ability to put lots in the Bailey Corridor into the inventory?
No.
Yes, no?
No.
Okay, so...
You can, you can include a discussion of your hopes about Bailey Corridor, but you cannot add any sites that are not within city limits in your...
Okay, so, so, so we're not, we're not meeting arena numbers with the Bailey, if, if we wipe out the current inventory, and we put everything in the Bailey Corridor, we're not meeting our...
There's not enough in the Bailey Corridor to meet our arena.
You wouldn't be putting it...
Like what you're suggesting is legally impossible, you just, you can't put things in the Bailey Corridor, in the site inventory.
So you would show that our sites don't meet those arena numbers, which then you can explain, have them further look into...
We can't, we can't get it approved if we don't meet the arena, the arena corridor, so again, we're back to that...
So then we need another site analysis, 'cause one of these...
We're back to that si, cycle again, where we have a non-compliant, not-approved housing element.
Well, I'm confused now, this, we've all had our shot at this document, I probably got my fair share of what I changed, and the ones you suggested got changed, there's words in here about Bailey Corridor, maybe they could be beefed up, but it's in here, and shy the two, well, I guess we got the two even now, so we meet the arena numbers with this document, so I'm at a loss why we can't recommend approval of this document with our changes, but I'm, I'm missing something that's causing you angst on that, so, but that would be my motion if I was to make it, but I don't wanna make it until I understand your concern, was we forward this document, we resolve or make a resolution that says, we approve this documents with our changes.
I just wanted to try, I just wanted to have one last try at understanding if there is another way to do this.
Okay, well, you, you don't have one more try.
And it sounds like, it sounds like, it sounds like we don't.
I believe the staff is going to take it forward.
That's why I wanted to just bring it up, so, so now I'm ready.
I make a motion that we approve this document to go forward to the city council, including our changes for approval.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes 3, 1. All right, I believe that closes this very contentious item, and we're gonna move to new business, any new business?
No, no new business.
All right, we're gonna reopen it again, we're gonna open oral communication, not about this argument, not about this subject, but if someone wants to talk about something else, this is the time? No, sorry, sorry, okay, so, all right, oral communication, whatever you wanna talk about.
Uh, no written communications this evening?
No, wait a minute, I haven't closed the, the...
Oh, sorry, my apologies.
So, oral communication is open.
Although it's not presented to you as a required document to read, I would highly suggest that each one of you planning commissioners go to the LAFCO meeting and listen to the LAFCO meeting, because in the absence of that information, you are not making decisions that consider all the relevant factors.
That is a good suggestion, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm gonna close oral communications, any written communications? Oh, well, I'll bring it back to commissioner request, any written communications?
None at this time.
All right, close written communication, we add to approval of minutes, someone wanna make the motion to approve the minutes from October 11?
My motion, no, to approve the minutes from October 11.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain, 'cause I wasn't there, motion passes 3, 0, 1. Director, staff communications.
Okay, just a real quick item, so, we don't have a date yet, but we are gonna have an upcoming workshop to discuss the ad hoc comments that the council had for amendments to the general plan, that this is unrelated to this document, but there are things that are part of this discussion, so I just wanted to give you heads up, once that, we have a date for that, I will make an announcement, we have some draft language that the consultant helped with us, so thank you, that will kinda be a starting discussion point on these ad hoc comments on the general plan, so I just wanted to announce that, and as we get closer to a date, we've got a lot of things in the hopper right now, especially this document and other amendments, but we are trying to get to a special workshop to consider those amendments, that's all I have.
Thank you. All right, commissioner requests, Commissioner Bridge?
I, I just wanna go on the record, this process is, I guess, in layman's terms, sucks, 'cause we've known for two years that this was coming, and we've got to this point where I personally didn't feel like I had enough time to review, and we're left with no options, so, the only reason I voted yes for this is, I'd rather get something than get nothing, and if we had not voted for this to go forward with our recommendations, it would've gone forward without our recommendations, and therefore, getting something is better than nothing, but I'm not gonna say I'm happy about it.
Yeah, I, I echo, echo your same comments, I feel like we don't know enough about this process, and maybe it is our, our, also, our fault, for not participating in some of those meetings, and maybe we need to change our approach to, to this process, and be more proactive, more present, more involved during the cycle, when we can actually probably make more impactful change, and more impactful influence on the numbers that are imposed to us, at this point, we're, we feel, I feel like I'm late in the game, that I have no recourse, I don't have the legal knowledge or the experience, practical experience, to reassess what the consequences are of either decision, and if we decide one way, I don't know what happens, if we decide the other way, I don't really know what happens either, so, I do hope, we're moving this to the council, I do hope that they have a little bit more insight on this, and they can make a better decision than the one we made tonight, that's what I'm gonna say. Braxton, you have a comment?
I echo what both of you say, you know, we're kind of in a rock and a hard spot, right, we're with no, with no growth and no annexation of city limits, right, we're kinda limited and stuck with what we got, and we gotta make the best of what we got. Hopefully, if this goes through in an eight years, right, we can have some annexation and some additional things, but it's really just the, from, from having the staffs back, right, that's, we, we got what we got, and we gotta do what we do with what we got, and hope that growth and annexation comes, but I appreciate everything that you all do, and, and like I said, we've had a short time to bury our head in this, and it's, it just, it is what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner Braxton, Commissioner Gonzalez?
Just wanna thank the staff and the consultants, your time is very much appreciated.
Yeah, I echo that. All right, I think we're gonna move for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, well, wait.
My second.
It's, it's, I'm, move to adjourn to the next LFO planning commission on 6:30 PM on Wednesday, November 8, do we have a second? Second?
My second.
All in favor, say aye, aye.
Aye.